Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to San Carlos City Council, City Council Successor Agency, to the Redevelopment Agency. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any changes to the order of the agenda tonight?
No changes from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Is there a report from closed session?
Mr. Mayor, on Item 2, which I attended, there's no reportable action, and I am informed that Item 1, there was no reportable action as well.
All right. Thank you. Next is Council Communications. These are communications and announcements. They're just brief items from the members of the City Council regarding upcoming events in the community and correspondence that they have received. They are informational in nature, and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. So why don't we start with Matt? Nice to see you back, by the way.
Thank you. I just have one item. I had a homeowner contact me, fellow who owns an older home in San Carlos. And just as point of background, we don't have any houses officially that are on any kind of historical status relative to the city. There might be some that are, that have chosen to do that through federal programs or state programs. But anyways, this fellow has a house that if we had that kind of program, would probably qualify. It's that old, and that's why he bought it. He contacted me because he's trying to do some remodel work, an addition work, and part of it includes putting in a garage. And he's having trouble meeting the typical standards for a garage, given what we have in our municipal code, and have it match the architectural style of the house. So I bring this up because I want to find out if I take this to staff and talk to them and then have it brought to council, if the council would be interested in looking at something that we could come up with that might allow for people. There's probably about 30 or 40 homes in all of San Carlos that might fit in this category, where people could do work on their home, and some of the municipal code could be looked at differently. One other point with this property, which if we brought it to council, you could look at this. If you look at the guidelines that are given by the federal standards when you're working with a home like this, he would be allowed to do what he wants to do, but it's just our municipal code, given the height of a structure that's allowed, that he can't do what he's looking, what his architect is recommending he do. So bottom line, I wanted to find out if there'd be interest, if there'd be interest with the council to look at such an issue. I could first take the project that this guy has, take it to staff, talk to them, and then have it brought to council to look at.
All right. Is there any questions from my fellow council members or a desire to pursue this?
I think you should take it to staff. I mean, certainly, and then see what they come up with. If they come up with some reasonable ideas, they may, you know, I mean, I can understand that.
I need to come to council?
Yeah, may not need to come to council. They can come up with some, some solutions, so.
Right.
Maybe there could be a report to council that might require some action.
Why don't we do it that way? I wanted to find out because I didn't want to spin my wheels, you know, spending energy on something that's not going to go anywhere. But what I'll do then is take, go to staff with it, and maybe we could have a, just a staff reports to council, and then we could take it from there, whether or not we want to take it up. Okay. Very good. That's what I'll do. Thank you.
All right. Bob?
Mayor, I have nothing this evening.
Okay. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just half a dozen quick little items here. Had an opportunity to once again be a ropes judge for the San Carlos School District earlier this week, and, or last week, I mean. And my judge partner for the night was actually John Byers, the county counsel. And we saw a bunch of great student projects, which were really wonderful. And in particular, I won't use his name, but there was one fourth grade young man that we met, who after he left the room, John and I looked at each other, and we both said, wow, whoever, whatever company he's going to create when he's older, we want to invest in. We don't even know what he's going to do yet. Also had an opportunity to judge some high school speakers at the Lion Speech Program, which was fun. Attended Night of Dreams for a fundraiser for a local group that focuses on pre-kindergarten family education, preschool basically for the entire family. Went to the San Carlos Educational Foundation Spring Gala this past weekend, where I think I saw several of my colleagues. I hope you all had a good ti, as good a time as Barbara and I did. And the last thing I'll mention is I attended an SBWMA board meeting, and the biggest item of discussion, that's the local trash agency, for the audience's benefit. The biggest item of discussion on that is there was a proposal to essentially downplay or dissolve the Technical Advisory Committee, which basically is the expert staff people from our cities that are part of the JPA, that advise the board. Fortunately, after some back and forth discussion, we're going to leave it in place, because I personally think that it's a very valuable resource for us non-technical people making those decisions. So that's it.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Cameron?
I have nothing to report tonight.
All right. Just a couple of things. I'm a member of the HART Board. The HART is Housing Endowment and Real Estate Trust, and part of that is being a member of the Housing and Community Development Committee for the county. And that committee is the committee that basically doles out any federal housing funds that come down. And that fund has been declining over the last 15 years or so. Apparently only about a million, less than a million new dollars have come in to the county to be distributed among a lot of different housing agencies. And attending those meetings is always a little, as part of it is sort of exhilarating, part of it is a little bit depressing, because there's so many deserving agencies that are trying to build better housing for seniors and disabled people and homeless. And I wanted to just point out that, as you may have read this morning, a homeowner, not really homeowner, but a renter in San Carlos is going to have to leave because he just can't afford the rent anymore. And affordable housing is going to become an increasingly dominant issue in this area, as everybody's experienced, especially anybody who's renting right now. I also attended the Spring Gala for San Carlos Educational Foundation, a wonderful event, and I hope they raised a lot of money. I also sat on the Caltrain Electrification Committee. They call that CalMod. Went to a meeting recently where we got an update on that, on what's going on with Caltrain. You're probably going to be seeing a sixth car. If you, if you ride the train, you may be sitting in one of those sixth cars. Right now, it's five cars for every engine. One of the reasons they haven't added a sixth car is a lot of the station platforms aren't long enough. But there's such a demand now, I think it's over 56,000 people a day ride Caltrain, which makes it, I believe, the largest commuter line in the country, surpassing even the one that goes between New York and Boston. I think they call that the ACOLA. Anyway, there will be another car, and the electrification process is moving along. To anybody who's interested in how many trees they're going to lose along the line, they've, they have a new system that they've adopted to evaluate the option, or not really option, but the feasibility of leaving as many trees in as possible. So they're going to give us a variety of these electrical, electric line poles that will allow them to sort of, sort of switch back and forth between different styles to avoid taking out as much foliage as possible. And that's all I have. So, moving along, are there any comments or updates by staff or city administrative business?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just a few. An update on the city's declared drought emergency. The first mailing has gone out to the community last week, and we'll be planning a second mailing to the community the first week of May. The council's ordinance will take effect May the 15th. Quick announcement on PG&E Line 147. The inline inspection process will be continuing after some construction work takes place. PG&E has identified two areas in their preliminary testing process where they need to also reconfigure the dimensions of the pipe to more adequately allow the PIG, the remote probe, to pass through it. This is very similar to the work that was done up on Line 147 up in Edgewood Park a few months ago. So the testing process is delayed now until likely April or May timeframe, after those physical changes to the pipe have been made, and then testing can begin. The city's Pipeline Safety Awareness Program, which is grant-funded, has begun. Flyers are being mailed out to the community this week. And finally, a quick report on our social media efforts. We're seeing a lot more engagement in social media. The new Shape San Carlos tool has nearly 400 registered subscribers now. And for those of you in the audience, I imagine there's a few of you who have already signed up for Shape. But if you haven't had the opportunity to sign up for Shape San Carlos, I would encourage you all to do that through the city's website. The city, on occasion, quite frequently posts various topics, including discussions about dogs and dog parks. And we collect the feedback from the community and then provide that feedback to the city council. So it's a great way for folks to be able to comment to their elected leaders. We know that not everybody can always make it to these regularly scheduled council meetings, so the important topics will be up on Shape, and hopefully you'll register and your voice will be heard. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a presentation to the American Red Cross. This is American Red Cross Month. I think we have a, we're supposed to have a representative of the Red Cross here, and you are here? All right. Thank you. Well, we have a proclamation for you. I'm going to apologize in advance. I was pouring myself some water, and some drops got on it. We'll, we'll get you a clean, clean folder, but I'd like to come around and present that to you.
This is John Liddell with the American Red Cross, and I'd just like to read a little bit of the proclamation that we are presenting tonight that is honoring American Red Cross Month. March of this year is American Red Cross Month. Whereas the Red Cross was founded in 1881 and is a leading voluntary agency chartered and authorized by Congress to act in times of need, providing compassionate assistance to people afflicted by personal, local, or national disasters. The American Red Cross Bay Area Chapter works tirelessly with nearly 3,250 volunteers to support us when disaster strikes, when someone needs life-saving blood or comfort and a helping hand. John, I would, I'm very proud to present this to you tonight, and would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. So you hit some of the high points there, and I'd like to thank everyone in the community for their involvement, for all the volunteers, over 1,000 youth volunteers even in Samatay County. So if people want to find out about Red Cross activities, to donate, blood drives, they can go on the web, Facebook, Twitter, et cetera. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, John, and I sincerely hope we never need your services. Okay. The next item is public comment. This person's wishing to address the city council on matters that are not on our posted agenda. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. If there are more than five individuals wishing to speak during public comment, the mayor will draw five speaker cards from those submitted to speak during this time. If the item you are speaking on is not listed on the agenda, please be advised that the council may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed under the Brown Act. Our general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or to have the matter placed on a future city council agenda for more comprehensive action or report and formal public discussion and input at that time. Now, I have at least one speaker card. The first one I have for items not on the agenda is Mike Stogner. Hello, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. I'm here, my name is Michael Stogner. I'm a resident of San Carlos for a long time. I'm here to speak about leveling the playing field for a certain person. Some of you know I work as a private victims advocate, and tonight I'm here to talk about a gentleman that's a 26-year employee of Samatay County. He's a sheriff deputy. And I want to talk about a newspaper article that was printed February 20th, and was printed, published in five newspapers. It was written by one reporter, and it was sourced by our district attorney, Steve Wagstaff, to the reporter, and then the story, and the story went out. Okay.
Can we, can we start over?
Yeah. Why don't you just raise it closer to you there?
Does this better?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'll start over. My name is Michael Stogner, and I've lived in San Carlos for quite a while. I also work as a private victims advocate, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of a Samatay County sheriff deputy. And I say sheriff deputy because he is a current sheriff deputy. And according to this article that was printed and distributed in five newspapers, and I've tried to get the five newspapers to produce corrections after I showed them that they were wrong. And what they said in the newspaper article was they identified him as the attorney for a former sheriff deputy. And I can tell you that Deputy Lopez is a current deputy. They also stated that Steve Wagstaff stated that he was very friendly to Deputy Lopez when he was a deputy. And that's a quote in the newspaper. And he is a deputy. He's not a former deputy. The other misstatement in the article, it said that he and his fiancee are both charged with embezzlement up to $400,000 in his previous campaign. And he ran for sheriff when I was running for supervisor of Samatay County. And the great news for you, well, for him, is that he only raised $250. And as soon as I called the two other newspapers and I said, how dare you write this kind of information about this gentleman, they immediately took it off their websites, thank goodness, because they made no formal correction. So I'm actually here only because the newspapers wouldn't be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Next is Perry Keenan.
Perry Keenan Belmont. Caltrain doesn't always stop there, so we're a very small town up there in Belmont. I just wanted to compliment the city council on, under their council communications, summarizing correspondence that you've received. I think that's a great idea. I actually signed up to say so under item, under item 5, but I wasn't called to speak, so maybe there was a reason for that. I'm not too sure. Okay. Thank you.
All right. You're welcome. Actually, Item 5 is, is Council Communications. That's, that's why, public speaking or public comment is for what you just did. So, thank you. Next is Edna, is it Olivera?
Yes.
I apologize.
(INAUDIBLE).
Oh, I apologize. No, I, yeah, I see that. I was, I don't think then that we have any more. I think what confused me is I had two speaker slips from Mr. Keenan. All right. So that, would anyone else like to address the council on any item not on tonight's agenda? All right. All right. Moving along, approval of the consent calendar. These are items considered to be routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask that we pull Item 8E.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
You don't need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. We don't need a second.
Do it, but I'll give you a second anyway.
Okay.
I'd also be willing to move approval of the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I could be wrong about this, but I thought I saw a speaker card come in for 8D.
Hang on a minute. Yes, just out of order. All right. So then we would need to pull 8D as well.
Mr. Mayor, I move Items 8A, B, and C.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Bristol?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. Now, we're going to move on to, we are going to handle the consent calendar items at the, at the end of the meeting. This is our custom. Correct? All right. Reports to council. These are updates on key city projects by the city department heads and staff and city council subcommittees. They are informational in nature, and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. All right. We have a report to council on the State of the Streets for 2015 and an outline for options to increase funding. Jay?
Good evening. Excuse me. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Jay Walter, Public Works Director. And tonight, we'll just give you a report on the 2015 State of the Streets for San Carlos. And it's something that we like to do on a regular basis in order to keep the council informed and the community informed on how we're working to make streets better and what are some of the challenges that we face. So tonight, we'll talk a little bit about how streets deteriorate, how a pavement management program works, and how we put that into practice in San Carlos. And we'll talk a little bit about some streets funding trends and challenges. So essentially, the basic idea is deflection will weaken pavement. So as the graphic shows, the wheel loading leads to cracking. The cracking in the pavement, sometimes you can relate that to bending a paperclip back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, until it finally weakens and breaks. Like that asphalt bends and bends and bends, and finally cracks. Below that, the base and subgrade, through that repeated deformation, get, they get softer, there's water intrusion, and that leads to more widespread pavement failure. So what's the real culprit? Water. Anytime you have cracked pavement, water is going to intrude, water's going to saturate the base, water is going to lead to more cracking and more deterioration unless you can stop the water from getting through that pavement surface. So the way the street typically acts, it will deteriorate over time. Typically, your excellent street will be good for probably up to about 10 years without any major problems. And then there's a period of between 10 and 15 years where the street rapidly declines, given no treatment or seal coating of any kind. That's when the cracks develop and the base begins to fail. So the types of pavement distress that you will typically see on our streets, asphalt streets particularly, the top left, alligator cracking. Starts out with one crack, it propagates out to many cracks as water infiltrates that area. The base weakens, and the asphalt is no longer supported from above. That's a very common problem, and then, of course, what happens with that is as those small chunks come out of there, you end up with a pothole. On the lower left, there's other cracking types called block cracking, and on the right, longitudinal cracking, tend to be along wheel track lines where there's excessive loading. And in the block cracking situation, it's oftentimes where you have wide temperature swings from cold to hot over a period of day and then over seasons. Other types of pavement distress, rutting and depressions, as you can see on the upper left, there's a straight edge laid across there where there's a, a physical depression, where wheels and vehicles have come to rest at the intersection, and the pavement is not able to support it anymore. On the lower left, you have some distortions of the pavement. Usually, that's caused by what are underlying conditions. In this case, there's a couple of, looks like a couple of water valves nearby, and it could be that there's small leaks from those valves which are causing that subbase to weaken, and the pavement will distort below before it will crack from above. And then on the far right, you see this one called weathering and ravelling. Oftentimes, you'll see that out on highways where you have lots of, lots of heavy traffic, and for some reason, the asphalt binder has failed to hold the aggregate together anymore, and it starts to come off as small rocks and other, other kinds of things are flung off to the side of the roadway. So the dreaded pothole. You can't patch a pothole by continuing to throw mix into that pothole. So whenever you see these potholes, anytime it's patched, it's just a stopgap. We need to make sure that we do a, a full repair, which is the base below it and the removal of the pavement above it, in order to fix that pothole, and then seal that surface so it doesn't happen again. So repair considerations that the city uses for our streets. We like to look at pavement repair from a preventative standpoint. When you look at the picture on the left, you see the spaghetti of crack sealing that's occurred there, and that's actually the improper use of a preventive maintenance strategy. There really is weak pavement there, and the sealing of all those cracks really is doing nothing to it, because the pavement is weak enough where those cracks will come back through right away. We like to think of it as analogy of your house. So if you take the time to properly prepare your house by scraping off the old paint, prepping and priming, and then repainting, sometimes replacing small pieces of the wood, and then repainting the house, you're going to end up with a longer-lasting exterior finish, rather than just simply letting that exterior of the house rot through, where you're going to have very, very costly repairs and possibly water damage to the inside of the house. So that's the approach that we like to use with our streets as well. When you look at preventive maintenance applied to streets, you can see along the top line, where the green line represents a series of what we call surface seals every five to seven years. Those are relatively lower cost, but they allow the street to stay in a better condition for a longer period of time. Theoretically, if you seal the street at a frequent enough interval, it would never crack, and it would never have water intruding into the base. That's just theory, of course. Every street will fail at some point in time. The red line represents a do-nothing approach, which would be just to simply let the street deteriorate to the point where it's failed, and then invest a huge amount of money in reconstructing it. So the approach that we take is spend less on the seals and the preventive work, rather than having to reconstruct every street at a very high cost. So effective pavement repairs we just described, we like to first do crack sealing where it can be done. Cracks are minor, they can be filled. We like to do dig-out repairs of smaller areas that have localized base failure. And then we like to do a slurry or other kind of seal, micro-surfacing or paving, so that we can, we can seal off the top level, provide a good riding surface, and provide a number of years of effective pavement. So the crack seal approach, as you can see in the upper right, the men with the wand as they're actually dripping the hot asphalt compound into the cracks, another guy using a, like a roller type of thing to get it forced down into the cracks, can be very effective. And in advance of a slurry seal, which is shown on the left, you can see there is some localized crack repair. The slurry seal will seal the top of the pavement, the crack seal will do a little bit more work on the cracks themselves. The slurry seal itself is not a very effective crack seal for large cracks. Micro-surfacing is a strategy that we've employed here in San Carlos the last few years, where it's a little thicker, and the finished surface almost looks like pavement, but it's not quite as smooth as your overlay. But this is a thickness and a seal coat that allows us to do, to have our preventive maintenance program and funds go a little bit longer. A cape seal is one which, it's a slurry seal, and then there are stone chips that are rolled into the surface. That's not one we use much here in San Carlos and in urban areas. It's not very popular because of the amount of rocks that get thrown off by the chips as cars drive over the surfaces. Hard to keep them all swept up. Overlay reconstruction, of course, that's the Cadillac. That's what everybody would like to see, and we'd certainly love to provide it if we could afford it, but we simply can't. And so the overlay reconstruction is typically saved for the streets most in need. One thing we also do here in San Carlos is we try really hard to coordinate with utilities. Whenever there's trench work that has to be done in our city streets, the last thing we want to see happen is this, where it appears that there was a freshly paved street, which was cut open, a pipeline of some type installed, and then patched over right in the middle. That immediately cuts the life of that street down to essentially where you'll start to see water intrusion and problems within about five years. So the pavement management program that we employ at the city, it's through the Metropolitan Transportation Commission with a program they call Street Saber. It documents the conditions and needs of our city streets. We have consultants that come out and assess those. They prepare a report, which also gives us some recommendations for budgeting as well. And it's, it selects street based on the cost-effectiveness of the repairs, so it emphasizes preventive maintenance, rather than, wow, that street's the worst one in your city, so you should spend all of your money repairing it, even if very little traffic uses that street. So the preventive maintenance strategy is one we've employed very successfully to have a, a pretty good pavement condition index in San Carlos. The streets are functionally classified as arterials, collectors, residential, or others. Other typically are the streets that we don't control, like El Camino Real, for an example. And it gives us a pavement condition index. And it gives us a pavement condition index. And in San Carlos, we are in the 60 range, which puts us at risk, which typically means that if you are not employing good preventive strategies, then your pavement will deteriorate fairly quickly. So in our roadway network, as you can see, the primary bulk of our streets are residential in nature, and they unfortunately have the lowest PCI. They have the lowest traffic rates of any of our streets, generally slower speeds. And so the work to keep them in good shape costs a lot more because there are more of them. And so what the city has been doing in the last few years is focusing on arterials and collectors. And as you can see, their pavement condition index are slightly better. Arterial streets in particular are ones which are eligible for some federal money, so we are able to do more work on those. Citywide, our PCI is about 60. Thanks to the council's investment in last year's CIP with funding for streets, we're able to keep our PCI relatively even and not in a decline as in some other cities. How do we rate in San Mateo County? Right now, we're in about the bottom third with a 60 PCI. One of the things to note, for example, up in the top of the ranks, Foster City with an 80, a very much newer city than us. And so their streets have not had the chance to age nearly as much or take as much of the traffic and use as our city streets have. So looking at budget needs. Our current investment of about $1.4 million per year keeps our PCI at 60. It's in the at-risk range, but it's a good score. If we slightly increased our amount, we could raise the PCI. One of the conversations that was had with the potential for a bond measure in San Carlos was if we could, according to our report, if we could invest $60 million over five years, we could raise the PCI to 86, which is in excellent condition. That's a lot to invest in a short amount of time, but you can see the dramatic effect that it could have. And I think you'd get the residents all upset at you because we'd be paving every street at the same time. So not maybe the best idea. No annual investment causes that PCI to drop. Once it reaches 50, it's going to drop faster because we'll be out at five years or so with no investment, and we won't be doing our preventive strategies. Street funding has faced some challenges in recent years. One of them in particular has been the requirement for ADA ramps to be installed at corners when we have paving projects which essentially alter the streets. That takes away from some of the money that can be used for paving, but it is a requirement by the federal, the ADA guidelines. There's also been an emphasis on complete streets lately, which is considering other modes of transportation such as pedestrians and bicyclists as well as vehicles on our streets. So some improvements are related to that. There will be, as part of the next stormwater permit, a likely requirement to do some green street improvements, which are ways to filter stormwater before it reaches storm drains and creeks. And the picture in the lower portion of the screen shows some work that we recently completed over on Branson Avenue, which was a pilot project to help reduce the PCB loading to the stormwater system by allowing it to filter through these landscaped areas down before it would drain away. And that's going to be something which we'll see as the new permit is adopted later this year, a requirement for some green street work that we'll have to do. And the other challenge is that we've just recently heard that there will be a decline in the highway user tax revenues that come to the city for the next few years. So our current funding sources, the state gas tax that's allocated to the city, estimated at about $960,000 per year in the current budget. The highway user tax revenues that we've been told about recently, the estimate for 2014-15 is going to revise down to about $830,000. And then in 2015-16, we'll be down to the $640,000 range. So quite a steep decline from what was being expected last year. One of the issues and the reason that revenue is declining is because gasoline prices have been falling and because, excuse me, gasoline consumption has been declining. With the rise in hybrid vehicles and things like that, one of the things that happens with this formula now, since the state changed it in 2011, is that there's an after-the-fact true-up, which reflects the actual sales that took place. And so because the numbers went down, the sales were down, we're getting less money back to be able to use on our streets. City General Fund is a very generous source of revenue for our street repair. We also have the opportunity to look at rubberized asphalt grants which use recycled tires. The key to that is that we would get a maximum of about $250,000 per project, and it pays the difference between the cost of the rubberized asphalt and the regular asphalt. Some of our arterial streets are eligible for extra federal funds, which is the federal gas tax, which is then allocated to the states and made available for projects that way. Potential funding sources, there's always technology advances. One of the things that, especially out on the open road that we're seeing more of, is recycling of pavement materials, cold in place or hot in place. Part of that is, for our community, part of the problem with that is large pieces of equipment which can't navigate our city streets very well. So it's not a very practical alternative yet, but I think that the industry will respond to that. We're constantly looking for sources to help repair our streets outside of the current budget. We have been able to get a couple of grants in the last few years that have helped extend the repairs we've been trying to do. The city also could initiate a bond or sales tax measure to pay more for streets if the council and the community chose to do that. And there could be an indexing or a higher gas tax rate at the state level, but at this point in time, it's sounding more and more like where they're heading is a user-based fee, which recently the state has put together a task force which is going to prepare a report and respond back by January of 2017 to talk about the feasibility of that concept. It's essentially the nexus between the user and the service, that is, the driver and the road that they use. You drive more, in theory, you'd be paying a higher fee or higher fees over that time. So what's next for us? We'll have our annual street reconstruction project go out to bid for the summer. We'll continue to look for those pavement grant sources that we can find. We'll go through a process, like we do every couple of years, we'll recertify our pavement management program with the MTC. And then we'll continue to come to the council, letting you know about the condition of our streets and the needs we have as part of our CIP process. It's a pretty important thing for us to continue to make good progress on. So we, of course, hope we never have a pothole that large, but certainly the comics can take a license with that. And then, but from our standpoint, there are not as many to the, like to the left, certainly not, but the ones to the right, I think every once in a while, we see a street like that, and we wonder, how did it get that bad? Well, we're hoping we're not going to let that happen here in San Carlos. So at this point, if you have council questions, I'd be happy to take those.
All right. Thank you, Jay. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jay. Good presentation. And I'd have to say that my official two-wheel road status detection vehicle says that your roads are, our roads are actually in pretty good shape compared to some of our neighbors. I can always tell when I'm ending up in Belmont, even without looking. Couple of quick questions, though. I was curious about, since you're probably the guy who gets them, how frequently do you get complaints or just tip-offs from citizens, residents about problems with our streets? Potholes, things to repair? Because I don't tend to get a lot of them.
Well, I know I could speak for myself. I probably would get via email or phone messages or somebody who would see me or somebody who would tell someone to tell me that there's potholes or pavement problems or things like that on a fairly regular basis. And I know our Corporation Yard staff does as well. And so one of the things that we try to do as quickly as possible is get out and take a look and see if we can't at least get some quick patch into the hole and then assess whether the problem is much bigger than that. And as often as we can, we try to put those locations on the paving project for the following summer in order to be able to at least make repairs that will last longer than it takes to have the quick patch come out of the hole again.
Now, you may have given the answer to this next question, and if you did, I missed it. Do we actually reassess every one of the streets in San Carlos every year? Or are you doing some kind of sampling technique on the non-arterial, non-collector streets?
The streets are segmented, and the consultant that's hired to do the assessment, he will do an assessment within a segment. So he won't look at, and so let's just say the segment is some kind of a block-by-block type of thing, maybe it's, say, 500, 600 feet, something like that, a block length or whatever it is. They'll visually look at that street, find representative pieces, and then assess the street based on that. So if it's a street that's fairly well cracked up, the entire segment length, they'll classify it as poor. And they'll use sort of a scale that will be relative to their observation of that particular street. But every street in the system is part of the assessment, and it's done every three years.
So every, within every three years, every street gets looked at?
Every street gets looked at.
Okay. The last thing is not actually so much a question, it's just a comment. You know, we do have the budget cycle coming up next month. No promises, but I certainly would be supportive if staff brings forward some increase over what we have been spending in the past. I was particularly intrigued by your one slide that shows we can make some fairly significant improvements for a relatively modest increase in funding.
All right. Cameron?
Thanks, Jay. Nice presentation. I wanted to sort of follow up on Mark's last comment. Is it possible to go to that budget needs slide? So my observation on the slide, there you go, is that, you know, for an extra $400,000, you can jump the PCI 10 points, and then it takes another $10 million to jump it 16 points. So could you talk a little bit about why that is the case? Are you having to reconstruct every city, every street in the city to get there?
The, in fact, the $60 million, the $60 million investment over five years, based on the consultant's report, is just that. You'd be reconstructing every street to get it in excellent condition. So it may not be, it may be that there's a lesser amount of investment because some streets wouldn't necessarily need that as much, but that's one of the gross numbers that the consultant provided as part of the report.
And, you know, you earlier used the kind of home maintenance analogy, and, you know, the argument for home maintenance is that you do the repairs now so you don't have to pay the big price tag down the road when, like, you know, the roof falls in. How do you think about that in terms of street repair investment? So is going from 60 to 70 and spending the $400,000 now going to save us money in the long term? Do you have to get up to, you know, do you spend, if you spend the 60 million over five years, which would be a challenge, but let's imagine that you did, does that save us money? How do you think about it on a cost savings perspective, not only on a sort of aesthetics and transportation perspective?
I think the extra $400,000 that would be invested on an annual basis would be, it would be more along the line of that green line that was shown on the one graph, where we would be making the preventive maintenance work last longer to preserve the streets in the condition, slightly, make them slightly better than they currently are, rather than raising everything to the top level, which then, within five to seven years, you're going to have to go back with seal coats anyway. So I think the wiser investment strategy is a smaller amount continually for a regular, you know, interval, if it's another 10 years or whatever it happens to be.
Okay. One last question. So you talked about how, you know, the price of gas has gone down, there's more hybrid and electrical vehicles, and so therefore we're collecting less gas tax revenue, and the city's going to see less gas tax revenue. So does that mean that even if we funded streets at the same level, we would expect a higher percentage contribution from the general fund going forward?
That would be my assumption, yes.
Okay. And so the numbers you were quoting, just to refresh my memory, it was about $950,000 we're getting now, and you think that's going to go down a few hundred thousand dollars over the next couple of years?
It looks to go down by a total for the 2015-16 year, which is next fiscal year. It would be down over $300,000 from where we currently are.
I see. So from a net effect to the budget, you know, we're having to fill that hole, no pun intended, and then add more on top of it potentially if we wanted to get to a higher PCI?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thanks.
All right. Thanks, Cameron. Matt?
I had just two questions. One, everything in the report focuses on asphalt, which I understand because all our roads in San Carlos are asphalt. But could you speak to what the difference is if we had, you know, there's other ways to build a road, concrete being one of them? Is there anything that we should possibly be looking at to increase the longevity and cost of our streets and roads in San Carlos?
The, in practice, the Portland cement concrete roadways have a longer initial life before deterioration begins to occur. So that's the reason many of the state highways are built with concrete pavement. Of course, it's much thicker because it's designed to carry much heavier loads, and so it has a much higher initial cost to essentially put it in place. But you have a lower sort of year-on-year maintenance cost until you get out a little ways, probably two to three times as long before you need to do any kind of preventive type work. But one of the things that the, and maybe I should have included it on my slide as far as technology advancement goes, but the industry is trying to do some thin concrete overlays for asphalt streets. There's been some mixed success, and the main reason is because the thickness of that concrete, it depends so much on the stability of the base below it, that you have to do a lot of repair work before that becomes a very effective strategy. And concrete pavement tends to require larger equipment to be able to put it down than some of the asphalt pavement does. But essentially, if you had concrete streets, then they would likely last longer and require less preventive maintenance over their lives. But then they tend to fail very catastrophically, as you note, on some highways that seem to fall apart, you know, within a year or so of your last time you travel on it.
The only place I've been, actually, that I've noticed concrete roadways and streets is in the Oakland and Berkeley Hills. There are some. And you're right, once they fail, they tend to, it tends to be a big disjoint between, where they join the pavement together. Follow-up question, though. You had mentioned the rubberized surfaces. Does that, once that's done, if we did any of that kind of work on the roadways in San Carlos that might qualify for that kind of grant funding, what do you know about that type of surface, its longevity and so forth?
The rubberized asphalt overlays typically work very well on flat streets. The city has tried it out in very recent times on some of our more sloping streets. And one of the problems was if the, if the mix plant, the hot mix plant, doesn't get the mixture just exactly right, it can tend to do what we call shove, which is using the force of gravity and vehicles. It can distort itself and shove downward. So typically, you use them on flat streets. You want them to be in a location which is not going to have wide temperature variations. You don't want it to become elastic again because that's what that binder will do. So I've seen it with some good success, but oftentimes, the problem is that the cost of the, of that rubberized asphalt is much more than the standard asphalt, and some plants don't like to run it because it can literally gum up the works when they want to, if they run different types of asphalt.
And then my last question is, it would seem to me that one area that the typical gas tax is not capturing vehicle miles is with the new hybrids and electric vehicles. Is there any other, I know the measure that's being looked at in Sacramento is to chip everyone's vehicle and, you know, which has issues regarding privacy and that sort of thing. Do you know of anything else that's being done, perhaps just to capture the electric and hybrid vehicles and not, not get involved with the gas or diesel-powered vehicles?
No, not really. Again, it seems to come back down to the idea of determining how many miles you actually travel in order to sort of make it a fair, if you're going to be assessed a charge for traveling lots versus someone who travels very little. That's, seems to be the principle that they're using is some, is an equity that way, but I'm not aware of anything that's targeting hybrids or electrics.
All right. Mark, you had another question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Just thought about, from some of the follow-on questions from my colleagues. Jay, this is before your time, but did, is it correct, if my memory correct, that San Carlos was by design for some years during the last, during the Great Recession, under-investing in keeping up the roads?
It's before my time, but as I understand it and look back at the investments that were made, that's probably the case, yes.
Okay. Then I just make the observation that, I was thinking about- Then I just make the observation that, I was thinking about Cameron's question about sort of how you look at the value proposition here. One of the values actually is when you have the money and you can sort of improve things, that buys you some cushion the next time you have some economic downturn, and you have to look for a way to stretch things.
That's right.
All right. Actually, I just had one question. You mentioned rubberized asphalt. Does that tend to last longer?
I think there's studies that indicate that it does. It, it has some elastic property to it, so it's a little less resistant to cracking that a standard asphalt mix would have. So with, if you, I guess, said under equal conditions, it probably would last a little longer than the traditional mix before you provide, have to apply a preventive maintenance strategy like a seal code or something else. So yes, but again, conditions aren't always equal, and I think it's fairly limited in terms of where we can actually use it to gain any real advantage of longevity.
Is it an expensive process?
It's an expensive process.
Which means it's not reducing the old tire landfill issue we have in this country.
Well, I think the, I think they're, I guess, to use a phrase, they're chipping away at it.
Chipping away.
Right? The tires are, the tires are building up, but they're, you know, they're grinding them up, and they're using them as much as they can, and the CalRecycle folks are very, very, very encouraging to get people to continue down this path of using that material.
All right. Well, thank you, Jay. Thank you for your report. And you reminded me, something I failed to mention during the council communications was that this Thursday, the 12th, speaking of roads, there's a community workshop at Carlmont High School starting at 5:30, and it's going to be all about the intersection of San Carlos Avenue and Alameda de Las Polgas, right by Carlmont High School, where the road changes there. And there are some major changes being contemplated to ease the traffic problems that occur there on a daily basis. So encourage everybody to, anybody that's interested, it's an open meeting, open to the public, I'd love to see you there.
All right. One last thing?
Yes?
For the benefit of the public and our residents, I'll go ahead and put the presentation from tonight and the pavement condition report that was done up on the website. So if anybody was interested, they could go look at that.
Terrific. All right. Thanks. Thank you, Jay. We do have one speaker on this, on this topic, Perry Kennan.
Belmont roads are pretty bad. Our PCI is 56, and I think it's going to drop to about 49. And I have studied a PCI report, and I, I know quite a lot about PCI. When you say you have an average PCI of 60, that hides a multitude of sins. Averages can conceal all sorts of problems. If you tried to work out the average biology of a human being, I don't know what you'd come up with. But what you really need to see is the, the percentage of roads in the 75 to 100, 50 to 75, 25 to 50, and below, below 25. You need to see the breakdown in those, and you need to see it by category, residential, collector, and arterial. I just got back from the South Pacific. The roads down there are 10 times better than here. I was in Iran in April. The roads are better there than they are here. The roads in America are a disgrace, with the exception perhaps of Houston, where concrete seems to flow from one end of the city to the other. I think you need a bit of help with Sacramento. They need a jibe. It was my understanding that the gasoline tax, a lot of it is cents, cents, so many cents per gallon. And with inflation, the cost of repairing roads has gone up, but because in this country everyone says we're against taxes, we're against taxes, the cents per mile have remained the same. I think it's about time that cities like the city and the city next door asked Sacramento if a county could arbitrarily, with a measure, before the voters, if they're willing to pay an extra five cents a gallon in their county. And, because you need revenue. The roads aren't going anywhere. You need revenue. So I would be trying to bend Jerry Hill's ear to say, we need something innovative. If, and if, if the taxpayers don't support it, let them live with lousy roads. But at least they get the choice.
Thank you, Mr. Kennan. Okay. Right on. Two minutes. How about that? All right. Let's see. Moving on, we are now at new business, item 10A, consideration of approving the use of City Hall Park as an off-leash dog exercise area and approve funding to fence the area. Christine Boland.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's very hard to follow Mr. Walter in that asphalt report, but I'll give it a shot. The request for you this evening is to endorse the Parks and Recreation Commission to, recommendation to relocate the off-leash dog exercise area formerly at Burton Park and Highlands Park and to City Hall here, and to fund fencing in the amount up to $80,000. This item is currently in the city's capital improvement program as a dog park design monies, and it's up to $80,000. So I'm asking for a swap for, to fund fencing. There's plenty of information in the background and analysis for this item, and I believe you have quite a few speakers on this issue. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Any questions of Christine? Yes, Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Christine, the $80,000 looks like is, it looks like there's, we have 43, I'm a little confused. This, this estimate by all fence says 43,000, and then there's one for 62?
The 62 is, okay, so the first one is just a basic black chain link. The second one is an upgrade for more of an ornamental iron-paneled fence, which, because of the campus and because of City Hall, we believe that it would be a visually appealing fence for this campus.
So you're basically asking for up to 80,000 and probably looking at the 62? So we have a little map here, I guess, or a little picture, an aerial picture in our, in our packet?
Yes. That is not to scale.
Okay. So I see these black lines that are drawn?
Right.
So am I assuming that the interior of those black lines would be the dog park?
Correct.
So would the, so all the landscaping that's there would stay the way it is until it sort of went away when they all ran around, or we're going to do something else to it? I mean, again, I'm just asking these questions, so.
Sure. That line represents the fence, however, we've got irrigation lines in there, so the reason why I say it's rough is because we may have to move in a few feet or move out a few feet according to where the irrigation lies.
But it looks like it's going to take approximately 75%, not even 80% of the park?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Mark?
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Christine, the, the proposal here, basically, is it going to be subject to review at some point down the road, or what?
This proposal is to give the off-leash dog folks a place to go while we review other parks and other city land. We've got an opportunity, perhaps up at Vista Park, we can look at again. The commission was more focused on Arguello Park at their last meeting, so we can look at Vista again. We'll also be looking at more of a permanent location, and that would probably require more of a, a larger capital budget item.
Okay. Thank you. Next question is, what protocol, process, what are we planning on doing on the cleanup side of things? And the reason I ask is, is because, on the one hand, City Hall Park is a relatively lightly-used park from at least most days, in my experience, but on the other hand, it's also right in front of City Hall that's sort of central to downtown, and so how are you planning on addressing the issue of keeping it relatively clean?
Well, we do have rules. We've got rules for off-leash and on-leash. Everyone is required by municipal code to clean up after their dogs. We also would retain the services of Yachina for landscaping maintenance. So therefore, the park should remain clean as it is now.
What, what if any enforcement provisions are you planning on applying, or resources are you planning on applying?
Enforcement?
Mm-hmm.
I suppose if, if a person does not clean up after their dog, and they, and they have a witness, such as a police officer, they could be cited.
I'm just thinking back to some of the comments that came in from when we were running the experiment at Burton and at Highlands. I mean, those are, and it's, it's not, it's not unique to, it's not unique to dog parks by any means. I mean, every rule requires some enforcement side on it because not everybody follows the rules. So I just, I'm a little confused about the, it sounds like we're not actually planning on much in the way of enforcement activity.
We're not planning now because we have such a commitment from this group, the responsible dog owners of San Carlos, and like before, if there were issues getting out of hand, I would, I would reach out to that group to have them step up their enforcement in keeping the park clean. So I'm relying on a volunteer group, and hopefully they will come through.
Okay. And last question, at least for now, is what, what current, if any, current uses does this displace? And I'm not talking about casual use of people coming to enjoy the park, which I see people sitting in over the course of any given day. Are there any planned events or activities that, that regularly use that park or irregularly use it that would no longer be able to use it?
The only group I can think of at this point, and they do have a application in for the end of the month, is Lions Club Egg Hunt. So we will most likely hold that at the end of the month and then look for an alternative location.
That's the only one?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Matt?
Question I have is, when the dog park was at Burton, there was no need for putting in fencing because it already existed.
Correct.
So especially based on your earlier comments or answers to other council members, it looks like we're talking about putting in a fence for something that is on a trial basis. Do I read that right?
I left out the word temporary in the staff report, just for the reason that, that the director has the authority to cancel these types of programs if it's not working out. We can remove the fence, but I just left out the word temporary. Perhaps it will work out beautifully and we'll leave it, depending on how other locations come online in the future, so.
So are you making any recommendation, one way or the other, regarding, it seems to me, you know, a cyclone fence would be something that could be put in on a less permanent basis. If you put in something that's decorative, I would expect there to be some type of, you know, bollards or towers at corners in certain intervals, and then that decorative fence would fit in between versus a cyclone fence might just be poles with, you know, a reinforced hole in the ground where you stick the pipe.
This proposal is for decorative fencing solid with gates, so no bollards, solid gate.
Okay. All right.
And then the reasoning is it's a busy intersection, so you can imagine dogs get a little crazy off-leash, and we wouldn't want them in the middle of San Carlos Avenue or Elm.
Oh, yeah. I understand the reason for the fence. I'm just struggling with the idea of changing the appearance and character of the park by fencing it, and if you were going to do that, you know, I mean, this is for kind of a discussion item for the council, but I could see the park ending up looking like a cemetery on the one hand, or like a dog park on the other, if it were just a cyclone fence. And so what I, I guess what I'm looking for is, and I don't see here in the, in the recommendation, is something that's truly on a trial basis, where we put up some temporary fencing, almost like you do on a construction site, and give a try at having dogs at the park on a schedule, and then we see how the, the cleanup issues go, how the use issues go, et cetera, before investing too much into something that, you know, we end up with a fence, but we don't end up with a dog park, and yet people maybe, like I said, don't, you know, maybe they don't like the fence because, like I said, it makes the park look like it's a cemetery instead of a park. So those are my concerns, but, well, I guess we'll have to talk about that later.
All right. Cameron?
Hi, Christine. I'm going to ask the same question, but maybe in a different way. Because it feels like, what, what I'm trying to get a handle on, which a couple of my other colleagues have asked, is do you see this as a permanent change to the park or a temporary change to the park? And the context is, is that, you know, the park was designed for a specific use. It's got a pedestrian path that goes through it, it's got benches, it's got grass on either side, it's got a tree in the center. So if we're changing the use, and we think that, you know, we should make a great dog park, we're enthusiastic about a dog park, should we redesign the park so that it's a good dog park and put it, move the pedestrian paths so people have, can walk around it and they don't have to go through two gates, et cetera? Or if we don't think that it's a permanent solution, why do we need, why do we need to do it now? Why spend the $80,000? Why not continue the search? I, I guess I'm trying to understand your thinking, and I'll just add one other question on top of it, which is, to the degree that you're looking to see if this is successful, how would you define whether it is successful or not successful?
To answer your, your last question first, I think the number of complaints received can help me determine whether it's successful or not. Feedback that I receive from the community and the commitment that I receive from the responsible dog owners will tell me if it's, if it's a good decision or not. Talking about the why now, why fence it now instead of waiting? Because the, the other locations aren't perfect. There's no downtown location. There's nothing really flat in this area. We've got a couple of locations in mind, but they're up on a hill, and we hear the cry over and over again that the condo owners, the senior citizens, the folks in town who can't walk up hills, who can't reach those other locations, they really need this type of, this type of location. So this is a great alternative for, for now. I'm not going to say temporary, I'm not going to say permanent. I'm going to stay right in the middle because if it, if it goes sour, then I'll, you know, probably close it and move on to another location. But if it's successful, we'll leave it there. And so the future remains to be seen, and I think we have a great commitment from this group now. They are very sad to see the other locations lost, and they would really like to have a place to go now. We do have Heather Park, but that has its challenges as well, so this does provide a great downtown location.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Bob?
Follow-up, Christine. So looking at these prices, it appears, there's, there's $19,000 difference between the, just the fence and the, everything else is the same. It's the, you either get four feet of black vinyl thing or chain link, or you get black ornamental iron panels. You know, sort of what some of the other folks up here have said, if we put in the more expensive one, in theory, it's possible that we may, it may, it may be temporary. Again, I realize you can't say, I can't answer that, I understand that completely. And I'm doubtful that we could put in the first one and just for $19,000 more, but maybe put in the other one. I, I don't see a breakdown here, so I don't know if that's possible. Do you have any thought to that?
Whether we can put in, I'm sorry, whether we could?
Sure. The base price is $43,000.
Right.
The, add on the 62,000. The only difference is the fence. The other three things are the same. So my point is, is for 19,000, I wouldn't necessarily want to spend the 19,000 unless we thought it was going to be permanent. If it's going to be permanent, can we add it on later? Add the 19, in other words, would it only cost $19,000?
To upgrade it.
To upgrade it. I don't know that that's true because of other things that they would have to do. All the equipment's the same.
It's labor. We're paying a premium for labor. This is prevailing wages, so that's why the rates are high. So the answer is no. They would have to rip out one fence and put in another.
And it wouldn't, it would be more than, you anticipate it'd be more than $19,000 then?
Yes.
All right. Again, I asked the question. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. I had a question. I was trying to find out, find in the staff report, I didn't seem to find in any mention of the ongoing cost to maintain this, the inside of this off-leash area on an annual basis. I mean, I understand, my assumption is the dog owners are going to be 100% compliance, but still, there's going to be some maintenance issues. And I'm just wondering, what sort of, what sort of budget do you think, would you anticipate that we would need to keep this looking attractive?
This is, we're not requiring or increasing any parks maintenance there now or in the future. This will be under the current contract unless we see an issue. This will be under the current contract unless we see an issue. I don't imagine the, the grass will sustain itself what it looks like right now, and that's due to the heavy use, future use. But at this time, there's no increase in maintenance proposed.
So it's going to sort of be a sort of a wait-and-see type of thing? I see Jay noting this.
Yes.
All right. All right, Christine, thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff, did, you look like maybe you were, there's something you wanted to add?
Not especially, Mr. Mayor. I was just listening and thinking about all the various questions and understanding the position that Christine is in tonight over the word permanent versus temporary. There is, there is no such thing as a permanent use in one of our parks. All uses are temporary. They're subject to decisions that are delegated to staff in the municipal code and, of course, within the purview of the San Carlos City Council. So our goal here is, is to have a permanent home for this. That's the goal. And to achieve that goal, the program will have to work for our dog owners in town as well as the community in aggregate. And one of the reasons that we're proposing a nicer fence is to help ensure that there's a good transition, that we, that we make every effort to have this program work at this location, recognizing that City Hall Park is an underutilized park in town. It doesn't have a playground, it doesn't have any athletic fields, and, you know, those two components are where historically we see problems with off-leash dogs and other uses. When you have off-leash dogs around playgrounds, you have parents with toddlers that are very sensitive to dogs running up to their child or somebody getting knocked over. When you have athletic fields, you have, you know, the unfortunate incident of a kid laying out in center field for, for a fly ball and coming up with more than they bargained for. And so we felt that this was, this was a unique location relative to the property that we own right now. We feel that our current maintenance contract should, we hope, be able to keep up with the routine maintenance of the park moving forward, but that's something that we'll certainly be monitoring. I think, as Christine mentioned, I think, you know, the, the grass will be difficult to maintain in its current state, but we want to make sure that it is maintained and healthy, even if it isn't quite as good now, doesn't have quite as many animals peeing on it right now. But it does get, you know, pretty heavy use with on-leash dogs right now. And then we'll be monitoring the issue of waste disposal, and we're hopeful and appreciative of all the efforts that we get on behalf of our dog owners in town. But if it becomes a problem, we'll work with that group to try to correct it and possibly seek additional resources from the city council. We want to make sure that, you know, to the extent that this is going to be sort of our premier dog park location in town, at least for a while, that we make every attempt to have it be enjoyable for the folks that are using it, whether they have a dog or not.
And I assume that in the worst case, and the program didn't work out and we abandon it, it doesn't necessarily mean that the fence has to come down if it's a decorative fence.
True.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you, Christine.
Thanks, Christine.
All right. We have some people who would like to speak, and the first one is Edna Chavira. Did I get it right that time? Come on up, Edna.
Hi. I'm a San Carlos homeowner, and I'm here to lend my support to the temporary dog park at City Hall. My family were regulars at Burton Park, and like many other families, we miss the sense of community we experience there. We look forward to having another centrally located, accessible park where dogs and members of the community can come together. I feel this city needs at least a temporary dog park, especially as the spring and summer months approach. City Hall is flat, centrally located, walkable for many residents, and accessible for all residents, including the elderly and disabled. I strongly encourage the council to approve this proposal as soon as possible, even if only as a temporary test. Thank you.
Thank you, Edna. Our next speaker is Kyle Velasco. Kyle? Oh, hello, Kyle.
Hi. I'm Kyle Velasco, and I'm seven. So I have a dog, and his name's CJ, and he really likes to play. He likes to run around. And we take him to some dog parks that are in Menlo Park, other places, but we need one here, so he doesn't, so, because it's, because he really wants to play. He wants to, he wants to run, he wants to do lots of things. He wants to get crazy. Yeah. So, um, so I'm a kid, and you know that, and, um, I like to play, just like my dog does. I like to do lots of things that my dog likes to do. And we need, and we already have lots of parks for kids and things, but we need parks for dogs.
Thank you, Kyle. Well said. Next, we have Kurt Hemming, Hemmingson? Apologize if I butchered your name there.
Mr. Mayor, council members, this is a tough act to follow, Kyle. I'm a San Carlos resident, still eight years. I've got two little dogs. I walk them occasionally in our, well, most frequently in our neighborhood. I echo what City Manager Jeff Maltby said about the location of this proposal site, away from athletic fields and playgrounds. I think what Kyle said is we need a place to take our dogs, and it's not an easy choice. We recognize that. I think parks can be designed for common use, for both those with dogs and without dogs, and I encourage the Park and Recreation Department and the council to consider a way to design this, both use, access, and scheduling, so that it's accessible during the lunch hours, during the work week, for employees who care to sit outside in the sun and eat their lunch, and during the afternoons and weekend hours, it's accessible for dog owners that they care to walk their dogs, let them enjoy social time with others, and of course, maybe Kyle and his friends. So I applaud the proposal, and I think it's a right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Next, we have Helen Lowash. Are you here, Helen?
I guess she's not.
Diane Montgomery.
Hi. I'm Diane Montgomery, responsible dog owner of San Carlos. And that name was given to a dog group eight years ago, when we started soliciting the city for a dog area. We never called it a dog park. We don't want the Palace of Versailles or anything. We don't need agility testing. We wanted grass, time, and space. That's it. So for eight years, we've been looking for some sort of program where we could socialize and exercise our dogs, but that goes for us, too. And in January 2012, we were granted a six-month pilot program. It went so well, it was made permanent that August, and we've enjoyed this, this privilege ever since. Suddenly, the program is just terminated, and we're just feeling the loss deeply. My dog is fat because I have no place to run him. I'm old, I can't climb the hills, and my social life is in the pits because I have enjoyed going out every evening with my dog and speaking with other people. It's my only sense of community. My dog is my social director. And the last three months without that, that socialization, now he's fat and I'm depressed. We just want to thank Christine and Jeff for them, oh, I've made him smile, yay. We want to thank them for coming up with the idea of City Park because it is underused, it is a good location, it's safe. I'm not going up where there's cougars and tigers, thank you, and coyotes, what have you, rattlesnakes. And our payoff to this kid really worked. So we couldn't ask for a better speaker. But we urge you to grant this. Again, the fencing, if it looks nice, so much the better. It doesn't have to look like a cemetery. And we, Responsible Dog Owners of San Carlos, did a great job of cleaning up after our dogs and going after other people who didn't. And since this program has been terminated three months, I'm seeing dog poop all over the city, on the streets and stuff, and I always carry bags. And I pick everybody else's poop either because I don't want our dogs blamed. We guarantee that we will police the program here and make people obey the rule because it is a privilege, and we don't want to lose it again. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Our next speaker is Jan McKim. Is Jan here? She'll be right up.
My name's Jan McKim, and I am a responsible dog owner. And in trying to make sense of the proposal before you tonight, I, again, I wish I could make this humorous, but I have some questions. The fence around City Hall represents 75% of the park, and, I don't know, when my dog gets out there and plays, she's going to be bumping into the fence. And if there's any way you could expand the fence to be up to the sidewalk, I don't see why that would be a problem, especially if you go with the black vinyl chain link, which would match all the other fences in the central Burton Park area. I don't see a need to go with the black ornamental iron panels, which cost $19,000 more. You could use that money towards expanding the fence to be a bigger area. Those would be considerations that I hope you will consider, but I, too, am very much missing the camaraderie and the area that we had at Burton Park. I know we have to change. I'm just hoping that the change isn't a waste of money, and I'm hoping that we will eventually have a permanent dog park so that, did you know that there are more dogs in San Carlos than there are children? Really? Did you know that? I, I read that, and...
We all know that because we all walk precincts.
You all... Oh, okay. Well, I, see, what do I know? But anyway, I do know that, and as you can see, there's a lot of us here tonight, there's a lot of us who couldn't be here tonight, and we just really miss having a dog park. So I think you're getting the message.
Thank you.
I think you started it.
Nicole Davis.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for affording me the opportunity to address you this evening. I wasn't exactly planning on speaking. In fact, I don't know that I've ever addressed a council before. Forgive my nerves. I just wanted to reiterate the importance of the San Carlos Dog Park, and I understand that you all know that it's an important thing. But some, something that I found to be true in this particular community, when I experienced the dog park for about eight months, was that it wasn't just about going out and exercising our dogs, although I will tell you that my nights have become more sleepless since we don't have the dog park because we just don't get out and get to play enough. But perhaps more importantly, was the ability for youngsters like Kevin, Kevin? Kyle, Kyle, I apologize, to, to speak with older members of the community in ways that you don't see on the, on the ballpark, or on the botched courts, or any other environment. I really found that very unique, that young children could gain wisdom from older adults in a community setting that I think most communities strive for. And so while this does afford us the opportunity to walk our dogs and socialize our dogs, make them more friendly, hopefully make our neighbors more friendly, you know, it also provides us with that, that sense of community. When I first started going to the dog park, I knew the neighbors across the street and to the left and right of me. I now have friends in San Carlos who are miles away from me in distance, but who I now consider to be close friends because of the experience, and exclusively because of the experience with the dog park. So on the soft side of this, I would, I would ask that you consider those factors in making your decision. Also, I'd like to say that I know a lot of the folks who use those facilities are quite willing to participate in workday activities. They are quite willing to stand up and, and make contributions. If they can't of their time, certainly of their money, and, and are exceedingly interested in making this a successful endeavor for both the city and for the participants of the park. So again, I thank you for the ability to address you, and I appreciate your consideration of this matter.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? All right. Seeing none, I think we're probably ready for a, oh, wait a minute. Hold on. Mark, you had a question?
Yes, just, thank you, Mr. Mayor. One quick question for staff. The, if we approve the measure as it's been written in front of us with a cost element in an amount up to $80,000, which fencing option does that cover? Does that cover both of them?
That would cover either of the, either of the options, and potentially an expanded area, which is something the staff's already talking about, exactly where the fence will go. And there's a component where we have to consider the access to the adult community center from the backside.
Then, Mr. Mayor, I move to endorse the Parks Recreation and Culture Commission's recommendation to relocate the city's off-leash dog exercise area to the City Hall Park and authorize fencing and ancillary expenses related to the project from the city's Capital Improvement Budget Fund 27, project number C9343, Dog Park Design, in an amount up to $80,000.
A second.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Discussion?
I guess I have a question for up here on the dais. If we, do we see ourselves, or perhaps it's for staff as well, the thing I'm struggling with is what this is going to look like, you know, as, well, as you guys know, my business is designing things. At one point, I was in landscape architecture, and I was involved, when I was with that company, in hardscape design, which means you're designing benches, fences, those kinds of things. And the reason I said I don't want City Hall Park to look like a cemetery is because that's the thing I fear. And yet, I didn't get anything from staff that showed me any renditions of, you know, like a picture of City Hall Park with, which is not too hard to do these days with computers, you know, is put in what this fence might look like. And that's the thing I'm struggling with the most. I have no problem with the idea of a dog park there, per se. In fact, when the idea first came up, and I just thought, oh, we're going to use the park for dogs, and not thinking of a fence at all, a great idea, you know, good location and all that. My only concern now is if we approve this and a fence goes up, and especially if it's ugly and it looks out of place and that sort of thing, we're going to hear from that, from the community. You know, right now, we're hearing from a very focused group who's very focused on one thing, and that's dogs, which, I have a dog, dogs are great, you know, I have no problem with that. But what we're not hearing from is the greater part of the community that's not here tonight, that doesn't have dogs, or maybe they do, but they just don't take them to a dog park. And they drive by City Hall, and suddenly there's a fence there, and they go, oh, my gosh, what happened? So that's my concern. And the only thing, I guess where I would go with this is if what we're approving is just funding to go forward with designing, and we're going to see it again, I'm all in. But if we're talking about approving it, and it gets done, and it's just going to happen, I'm not in. Because what I really wanted to see tonight in the staff report, and I didn't, is some depiction of what we think this is going to look like. And my last comment as a discussion item is, the lady that talked about her dog bumping into the fence because it's too tight, I agree. If we're going to put a fence, let's put it along the sidewalks with a nice, you know, with some gates, and let it go at that. But the way it was shown, that, that drawing, and again, you know, this is my field of work, so when I look at something that's so basic of a graphic of, well, we think we're going to put the fence here, I'm sorry, I can't support something like that because I don't, as someone who designs for a living, I don't have enough information. as someone who designs for a living, I don't have enough information.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to... I understand, Matt, where you're coming from on being concerned about design and aesthetic issues, and I would certainly agree that you, since that's your source of your living, you're much better at that than I am, so it's probably a bigger sensitivity for you than it is for me. The reason I asked the last question I did before I made the motion of Mr. Malpey as to what the up to $80,000 figure was going to cover, I am comfortable delegating to staff to make sure that whatever they put in here within the confines of being functional in terms of providing safety both for dogs and dog users and, you know, pedestrians walking on the sidewalks, and aesthetics, that they will strike a good balance. I'm comfortable delegating that to them. I mean, if nothing else, frankly, you know, this is Jeff, this is something Jeff's going to see out his window every time he looks out his window. I have a funny feeling that he, you know, he may not have the greatest sense of aesthetics in the world, but it's going to look at least nice enough that it'll pass muster there. And I don't mean to make light of the concern, Matt, because I do understand it. But for me, I'm willing to delegate to staff to do the right thing. I want to make sure they have the money to make sure that this looks reasonable. I also want to make sure, as from my questions you probably realized before, I want to make sure that the resources are there, keep the grass up, whatever, so that it looks decent. Okay? I've seen the dog park that's out by Silicon Valley Clean Waters installation. Quite honestly, a lot of people love it. I have no idea why they actually go there because to me, it's just a dirt field. And I'd like to not have City Hall Park be a dirt field, so I want to make sure the resources are there to keep it up. So that's why I'm going to, that's why I made the motion and that's why I'm happy to support it.
You didn't consult the dogs.
Actually, I asked Diego. He said, actually, he didn't say anything, but I think he's in favor of it.
I also agree with Mr. Olbert, and again, sensitive to the fact that this is what you do. But I have all the faith in the world that staff's going to make this look good because it's a corner that people are going to drive by a lot. I tend to disagree with the speaker who wants it all the way to the curb. I think it should be set back personally, but again, I'll leave that to staff too, how they want to, how they think the best way to do it is. Because some people walking by maybe not want to have a gate open up and a dog coming right out. Just, you know, there are people who perhaps aren't as friendly with dogs as other people are. So I want to make sure that's... But I, again, have all the faith in the world that staff's going to work on this and do the right thing for us. So that's why I second it and then why I think we should just go forward with some generalities in this case and let staff figure out if you need to make it a little bigger or tweak it a little bit, whatever, and make it functional for the folks who have to use it.
All right. Thank you. Cameron?
Yeah, so I definitely agree with Bob and Mark. I tend to think that this is going to be a long-term solution. So, I mean, my preference is for us to consider it as a more permanent solution. I think, you know, this is sort of compromise at its highest order, and I think Jeff outlined it well, which is it would be nice to support both a green space around City Hall that had a dedicated use and a dog park as well somewhere else. But we don't have the space. And given the available resources and there isn't playground, athletic facilities, then I think it's a reasonable compromise. I think once people start getting their cup of coffee and taking their dog to the park, I think it's going to be very difficult to change that. And I suspect, you know, the pushback from the community is going to be relatively small, provided that, you know, to Matt's point, we design it well and it's well-integrated into the neighborhood. And I would say, you know, as somebody who has young children, you know, we do experience off-leash dogs at Burton Park a lot. My kids are quite young, they're quite frightened of dogs, and so having a dedicated place where people can go, I think is going to be a benefit to a lot of the other parks. And then there's also all the benefits everyone talked about, about creating community. So I'm happy to support it.
All right. Thank you. Jeff, you had a couple of comments to weigh in?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just going to take one run at Matt here, see if we can get him on board with this proposal. One thought that occurred to me is, you know, we are trying to move this quickly, which is, you know, we're coming into the summer months and there is no off-leash area right now in town. But as we do this, be happy to include Councilmember Grocott as sort of an informal subcommittee to work with staff to provide us with his expertise, which of course is design. And I didn't realize you had expertise in this area.
Through the chair, I think that's a fine idea and I'd certainly support that, if Matt's willing to do it, of course.
Oh, yeah, I'm willing to do it.
No problem.
A lot of good comments. I think my only comment is that, I think what makes me comfortable with this is that staff's already demonstrated a willingness to terminate a program that wasn't working. So if this is a program that doesn't work, I think staff will act accordingly. Okay. I think we're probably ready for a vote. Crystal?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. All right. Moving on to item 10B, discussion and direction of a potential bond measure and next steps.
Mr. Mayor...
Thanks for coming, Kyle. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, for the record, in an abundance of caution, I'm going to recuse myself from this item because my home is within 500 feet of one of the subjects of the potential bond or potential subjects of the bond.
All right. Thank you. Jeff, I imagine you are going to talk to us a bit about this?
I'm going to talk to you just a bit about this, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Jeff Malpey, City Manager. I'm going to give you a quick overview of the public outreach process that we have conducted in January of this year to collect data through scientific survey, community outreach meetings, as well as our Shape San Carlos tool and a mini forum that was held at the request of the San Carlos Rotary Club. We had over 1,100 individual respondents to this outreach. And all this data was reviewed in detail with the City Council and the public at a special February 21st and February 25th council meetings. There were pretty clear findings in terms of what the community was most interested in supporting. It was street maintenance and potholes, which you heard about earlier, and the purchase of what we call the Black Mountain Properties, which is actually three different properties located off the Alameda just to the north of Britton Avenue. The survey also told us that a bond measure would be more likely to be successful if it were $29 per $100,000 of assessed value or below, and that we should do more outreach on whatever option or options the council selects before moving forward with a bond measure, particularly in the area of Black Mountain Properties for the acquisition of a park site. There were a lot of people who we met at meetings or were interviewed on the internet or over the phone who weren't specifically aware of where geographically this property was located or what it was like. So our recommendation for you this evening is that you pick one of these two options, either the Black Mountain Property Purchase, including the Rullerian Vista Del Grande Properties that are contiguous, and/or rather fixing streets and potholes. So here is a picture of the three properties, the Black Mountain Property in orange, the Vista Del Grande Property in blue, and the Rullerian Property in yellow. All told, it's about 25 acres. I don't have any pictures of potholes or street cracks, but conveniently, we saw plenty of those earlier tonight. Moving forward in terms of outreach, the staff, if the council elects to move forward with an option tonight, would like to conduct outreach between March and June of this year and then conduct another scientific poll community-wide in June before coming back to the council and asking for a formal decision about whether or not to move forward with a bond measure. So this is sort of a sample, and as you might imagine, these dates may fluctuate a little bit, but it gives you some idea of what we would be looking to do. So tonight, we'd look for a recommendation on topic, you know, which one of these two would you like to see us conduct more community outreach on? Then we'd do that through June, have the survey, and then bring this back to, all the information back to the City Council in June, early July, for the council to begin considering. By August 7th, that's sort of the hard deadline where the council would need to vote to put a bond measure on if you're going to go in an election this November. Obviously, your survey consultant provided you with data on what June 2016 and November 2016 election would look like. So this date isn't the end of the world, but it's the first date that you have to hit if you're going to make a November 2015 election. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, as well as staff. Elaine Costello's here, as well as Tara Peterson.
Yeah, just one quick question. If we know of the number of registered voters in San Carlos, what that figure is approximately?
As I recall, it's roughly 18,000.
Yeah. I was going to say 16, so we're in the same ballpark.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I don't see any other questions, but we do have a speaker, Priya Joseph.
So he has recused himself, but I was hoping that he would give more clarification on the funding vehicle. If, you know, some of you can talk to that, what the funds raised and the surplus could go to, should you pick one or the other? So transparency, if you can talk to that, that'll be awesome.
All right. Thank you.
I can take a stab at it. So, you know, again, we're speculating tonight, and at this point, isn't the point in time where the council's writing a bond measure. That would be when they vote to put it on the ballot. You would know exactly what they're voting on. But speculating tonight, let's say, for example, you were to choose the Black Mountain Properties, I expect the bond measure would include property, you know, specifically calling out whatever these parcel numbers are that are assigned to these properties that were pictured in the map, so that it's clear that these are the properties that we're talking about purchasing to the public, as well as language allowing funds to be used for park-related infrastructure improvements on this site. My understanding of excess bond money, so when, and now you're looking way out into the future when a bond is retired, you know, probably 30 years from now or 30 years from next November or even, even actually a little later than that, whenever the bonds are issued, excess bond proceeds can either be used to pay the bond off early, or my understanding is they could flow to the general fund. Those are decisions, you know, there, we talked a little bit at the last meeting about putting language in a bond measure that would say any excess proceeds would be used to pay the bond off early or return to the taxpayers, which is certainly something the council could do. Again, none of this is before you this evening, and all will be worked out at the time that the council votes to actually have a bond election, should the council ever do that.
Hang on a minute.
I'd be happy to talk to you after the meeting if you have more questions about it.
Well, you have a couple of questions, but we also have some more speakers left. Did you have a question of staff, Mark?
No, I was getting ready to make a question.
Okay. All right. Well, we do have a couple more speakers. Matt, did you have a question of staff?
This one.
You're going to wait?
No, I have one other question.
Oh, yes. No, go ahead.
Okay. Just quickly, the cost of the money during the whole bond period, is it better to ask that question now or do we, is that something, you were talking about, you know, at the time we vote on the bond and so forth, it seems like that's when that would come up?
That's correct. You'll have, you are Bond Counsel, our Bond Financial Consultant, everybody will be in the room and able to provide you with a full picture of, you know, you never know with a bond exactly how it's going to work until you sell the bonds from a financial, so you won't know exactly what the interest rate's going to be, those kinds of things. But we'll be able to paint you a pretty clear picture.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So we do have a couple more speakers. First is Cecily Harris.
Cecily Harris for Cranfield Avenue, and I want to thank you first of all for voting for the dog park in City Hall Park that has been such an underused property for so long. And I'm not even a dog owner, but I'm going to be very happy to see the dogs and people at play there. I think this is an incredible opportunity for the council. How many councils have had an opportunity to buy 25 acres before? You could, you know, create an incredible legacy for this town. But my one question for you is if the board chooses, if the council chooses to vote for this option this evening, when will a decision be made on how this property is used? I mean, a city can buy a property for a lot of uses, and I know I attended one of the community meetings and, you know, there were a million different ideas, community center, swimming pool, dog park, trails, nothing, school site. I mean, there were so many different opportunities, and I wonder if people were to go to the vote in November, what they know what they're voting for, other than an acquisition of the lands. And I know, as our city manager said before, that park uses can change over time, so I do appreciate that. So if a bocce ball court is trendy now, it may not always be a bocce court, but I don't want to see a school there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Cecily. Next is David Crabbe.
Honorable Mayor and members of the council, I just have questions, really. Cecily hit on one of them is, what is the thinking in terms of what this site may become and might be used for? I think if you're going for a bond issue, you really need to define that somehow. It's pretty nebulous right now. And the second one is, do we have an option on those properties or something to hold them before this bond comes through, or can they just be sold out from underneath us? So that's the two questions I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, David. Now, would anyone else like to speak before we... Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, come on up.
You can fill out a speaker card afterward.
Just tell us your name.
Sorry, I'm Holly Jones. I'm a new resident of San Carlos. And I'm just learning about what's happening in the community and my neighborhood, and it's kind of really overwhelming, since I didn't know about it before I signed the contract. But anyway, so now that I'm here, I'm trying to get involved and I'm getting a little nervous, but I'm seeing something like this and I think to myself, what's currently happening on this property and will we be able to learn this or does everybody already know? And so I'm thinking about like, are there people that live there and they'll be displaced or is there something that I should know about before I say, yeah, let's make this a great park, you know? So kind of want to know how I would be affecting these people or this neighborhood or whatever it is before I make any decisions. So that's all I'm thinking about.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Good questions. Okay. Well, maybe before we come back to, I know, Mark, you had a question, but Jeff, maybe you could answer Holly's question about, you know, what's currently happening on the property and what would people be displaced and that sort of thing?
Sure. I can, I think I can answer all three of those sets of questions that we just had. There are essentially two property owners. One property owner for the Black Mountain or the orange property, and another property owner owns the yellow and the blue Rullerian Property. There are three single-family homes on the Black Mountain Property. They're all owned by the Bullock family, the historic property owners of the site. They rent out the three houses up there typically on like one-year leases sort of thing, which has been what they've been doing for a while. Both sets of property owners have the properties on the market right now. They're looking to sell them to developers or develop them themselves with between 75 and 100 single-family homes on these properties. So this would be our opportunity to preserve the properties in their more open space condition now. As you can see on the Rullerian Property, there's kind of a couple of big structures there. Those are old greenhouses that are quite dilapidated and broken down. There's lots of broken glass and pottery on the site. So if the city were to acquire it, it would be... So if the city were to acquire it, it would it would be cleaning all that up before we allowed the public in to use it. We're currently talking to both property owners right now to negotiate a potential option, but certainly they could sell it out from under us at any time, which is why we're moving as quickly as we are and trying to negotiate an option with them as soon as we possibly can. In terms of designing the park, designing a park is an expensive process and it takes a while to do if you want to do it right, and we definitely would want to do it right if we acquire this. So assuming that we had a bond measure that was successful to acquire these properties, we would be first and foremost entering into a very public design process with the council and the community to plan any improvements that that we would make at this park now and hopefully provide some plan for any facilities that we hope to add in the future that maybe we're beyond the scope of or funding availability within this bond measure. So there are questions, there will be questions up to the end on this that just can't be answered now, given the timeframe we're on and the expense of designing a park right now. But we're going to do our best to paint a picture to the public of what types of uses they could see in this park in the future if they were to vote for it.
All right. Thanks, Jeff. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to direct staff to move forward with outreach and survey for council's selected projects. Do I need to pick a particular project, Jeff?
We'd like you to.
Well, then, I will let me modify that. I moved to direct staff to move forward with outreach and survey for proceeding with the acquisition and development as a park of the properties, the Black Mountain, Vista del Grande, and Rullary properties. That sufficiently clear? Okay.
I second.
All right. Motion in a second. Anyone want to ask any other questions? Matt?
Just a question for us as council. The reason I asked how many voters in San Carlos is I'm looking at the number that was achieved with the first total outreach, about 1,100. And it's to me, that's a okay first shot, but I think is this gets, you know, more of a deal that we're looking at and considering. My question for us is, do we want to put some type of number on the firm that's doing these this outreach to make sure that we reach a certain percentage particularly of it wouldn't have to necessarily be of actual voters because I don't know how you would necessarily control that, but just a certain number of San Carlos residents with the idea that having done so, you've reached a certain percentage of voters. So some type of performance measure for this outreach effort.
Okay. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a couple of points I wanted to make. Just let me start though by commenting on on what Matt just said. I tend to look at this as approving and directing staff to go out and try and and figure out what the community is interested in seeing us doing with these properties, if anything. Okay? And I'll come back to that in a moment, but that's really in a way also a response to some of the other very good questions that were asked a few minutes ago. The reason we can't answer them now is because we haven't yet figured out what we're trying to do, other than in general, if the motion passes, we'd like to acquire the property to use it as some some park, open space, what have you. That's too nebulous to put in front of voters. We have to nail that down. That's what this next phase is, is to nail that down. And that's separate from the subsequent poll to sort of test voter appetite, because in other words, what the process I see is staff will do the outreach and provide information to the community. And then at some point, we if we decide to keep moving forward, we will commission the pollsters to go out and test a particular draft approach, a particular bond measure language, which we will develop based on what we hear. Okay? And so putting a performance measure on it, I'm not sure that that's if that's going to constrict what the pollster does, I'm not sure that's necessarily the best thing to do. I do think the goal ought to be to try and get as many people in the community as aware of as much as possible of the details here. Having said that, a key thing that I really want to make sure the staff does during the outreach phase is to narrow this down and basically look at different park uses, uses for open space, parkland, and and those two are not the same. And on one end of the spectrum, you know, true open space, we buy it and leave it there. We do nothing with it perhaps other than scrape some of the existing facilities on it. That's one end of the spectrum. There are other uses as well. There are dog park uses, there are trails of hiking, there's athletic fields, all of that stuff, we need to get information out there on, and the pollsters need to actually figure out how to test some of that stuff, because that's going to be critical for putting if there is a community-based support for for the bond measure, if that's going to be critical to putting that assemblage together. I'd also like to suggest that we think about, as we're gathering that information, whether or not the scope of the measure ought to be larger than just these properties. And what I mean by that is, do we want to also say that test whether or not there's an appetite for putting money aside to make other improvements at other parks in the community, if there's money left over? But fundamentally, you know, what we need to do now in this next phase is to figure out what the community wants, and I just would ask staff to be fairly broad-based about that, to get us as much data as we can so we can craft craft a good thing. And finally, I mentioned this at the last time we talked about this, and it's I understand why Greg had to leave the room, but we really do need to have some briefing on what how staff is going to go about doing this and staying within the context of the legalities of not proselytizing. Staff can provide information, staff cannot proselytize for or against any measure that may end up in front of voters. This is an earlier phase than a particular measure, but I do think we need to be very sensitive to that, and I for one would like a refresher on that. So I hope that we can get some attorney to come in and talk to us.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Cameron?
I just want to make a couple of brief comments. First and foremost, I wanted to thank Jeff and Elaine and and the staff in general for putting together this process and and just take a step back and talk about why where we are and how we got here, which is, you know, we're at a time in San Carlos where there's a lot of energy in the city, the economy is coming back, there have been a lot of requests for for bigger projects that, you know, the city can't fund directly out of its own budget, and we thought, let's go out and see, you know, what the people want. And we did it in a transparent and apolitical way. We used a lot of different methodologies. And, you know, frankly, this isn't necessarily where I thought we were going to end up. You know, I originally was thinking about swimming pools and thinking about soccer fields and other things like that, but I think, you know, the effectiveness of the process is that it brought to us a good distillation of what there's a large majority, hopefully two-thirds majority, support for. And and I have to say frankly, I think the people have made a good choice here, which is we're at a time where there's so much development happening up and down the peninsula and in the Bay Area in general, we're at a time where there's so much change, there's congestion, there's just a rapid pace and hecticness of life, and we have a very unique opportunity, as Cecily mentioned earlier, to preserve and protect for generations to come, a, you know, beautiful swath of a canyon right in the center of our geographic center of our city. That's a really special thing that doesn't come along very often, and so I'm very pleased that we we got that response, at least that initial response from the people of San Carlos. I think they are giving us a great signal, and I'm very excited to kind of work through this and see, hopefully, we can get this in front of the voters soon.
All right, thanks, Cameron. Bob?
Excuse me. I agree with my colleagues, what they said, as Cecily said earlier, this is this is unique. I think Belmont did this a few years ago up in some lands that they had. This is the last, except for Devonshire Canyon, I mean, which is really technically not in the city, it's in a county area. This is the last piece of property, large swath, as you mentioned, in the whole city. It's a unique it's a unique situation that I know a lot of people come up to me and go, there's too much traffic or there's too many houses or there's this or that or their other. This is a perfect example of, okay, here we go, if we got an opportunity to to possibly change that around a little bit. I certainly concur with Councilman Olbert about the fact that we also have to be very careful about having it be a city-sponsored situation. That's not the case. That can't be the case. As individuals, we can do what we want to do, but we're not we're not going to be council members in in doing this. That's not, I don't think, the appropriate way. And again, I concur that we need a little bit of council somewhere just to refresh us. I'm going to support this tonight, and I I think it's going to be an interesting dynamic for the folks who want the details. I understand completely, and we're going to have to come up with some good details to make sure that people understand that this is going to be a conglomerate of open space of of uses for the city and for the residents and come up with some some details on how to do that, which we will. But again, this is a process, and we're in March, and we've got it's going to be a quick one if we if we want to put it on the November ballot, and there's no we don't necessarily have to do that, we can put it on the June ballot or the next November's ballot. So we want to do it right, and we want to do it correctly and get all the information out so that folks understand this is a special special opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Matt?
So earlier I asked a question, I was hoping there'd be some discussion on it. I just heard one comment by Mark, who I don't think really cared much about putting any kind of number, if I heard you correctly. But again, I'll just throw it out there, I just want to make sure that there's, you know, obviously, I have a concern. I would like to know for a fact that we've at least touched, maybe we didn't get a response back, but we've at least, you know, somehow made contact with voters and residents in San Carlos who now know we're looking at this bond measure and we're looking at the Black Mountain Property and the Rullary Property specifically, so that, you know, it doesn't come up later that you're walking downtown as a council member and someone says, I had no idea we were doing that. Well, we reached, you know, we know we reached 2,800 people, and so that's 10% of our population and a certain percentage of our voting population, so we felt like we did a good job trying to reach people. At least you have an answer. If we don't have anything and it's just, maybe Jeff could speak to this. I don't want to raise the cost of the contract, but I just want to know that we've reached somebody.
Through the chair? If I may. You know, Matt, I apologize, I misunderstood you before. I thought you were you were making a comment about putting a performance metric on the polling. Now I understand you were saying you want to make sure that we reach people during this outreach phase. I I think that's an excellent point. The number I would put on that, frankly, is I think staff ought to be looking in terms of reaching out to every single registered voter in town in terms of like written materials and whatnot. I mean, I presume there's some mailing component that you're thinking of sending out, there's Shape San Carlos and what other things, but the mail thing is important in terms of getting to people who aren't part of those other channels.
This will feature in our upcoming citywide newsletter that we mail to every address in San Carlos to talk about the concept of what we're doing and looking at and what we've done. It will also have information about we're working with the property owners to have a couple at least a couple of public open houses on the property so that people can actually see it with their own eyes. We'll do mailings on that as well. And then I think, you know, once we approach a point in time where it's a little clearer as to what we're talking about in terms of a bond and what we've settled on, we would definitely mail all that information out to the community as well. So, you know, our feeling is on an issue like this, it is our responsibility to inform the public of what we're talking about, try to get as much feedback as we possibly can and provide them the facts of the situation. And as I've said all along, you know, this this is not a tax measure of old. This is about, you know, something that the community might want to have, and if they don't want to have it, you know, that also says something positive about San Carlos that they're happy with the parks that they have and the city that they have now. So this is all positive from our perspective, and we'd really like to get as much feedback as we can from the community, make sure everybody's educated. And just in general, you know, I think, you know, the line of work that the type of people that are attracted to this line of work and sitting on the dais, you know, we just we believe in the democratic process and, you know, darn it's discouraging to see 6,000 people vote in our elections, and, you know, we'd like to see all 18 come out and and vote on this and let us know what their opinion is.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Yeah, I just speaking for myself, I don't want to look back 10 or 15 years and have somebody say to me, you had the opportunity to buy that property and you passed it up. Even if people say no, I've always trusted the voter. That's why I wanted to have a vote several years ago on a tax. If it didn't pass, it didn't pass. Same thing with the North Crestview issue. I I trust the people of this town, the voters of this town, no matter which way they vote. I and I'm sure we will do our homework, we will have, there will be a lot of transparency in this process. If there isn't, then then shame on us, but we need to we need to put this before people because this is an opportunity that comes along once, and once that property's sold, what do we get? We get 68, 70, 75 homes. And that's fine for them, but, you know, once that's gone, that's those will be homes and that'll be it. So that's all I had to say. If there's no other comments, I think that we probably have a vote to have.
Councilmember Cecily?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokut?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay, moving along. Item 10C, consideration of adopting a resolution consenting to the inclusion of properties within the city's jurisdiction in the California HERO program to finance distributed generation renewable energy resources, energy and water efficient improvements and electric vehicle charging infrastructure, and approving an amendment to a certain joint powers agreement related thereto. Tara?
Good evening, council. I am here this evening to discuss with you a consideration of potentially joining a new JPA to offer the HERO financing program in San Carlos. I won't go into a lot of detail, I'm going to leave that for the representative from HERO, but I thought I'd start with a little bit of history about where San Carlos has been with this kind of financing program. So in 2010, the city joined with a JPA that was offering California First. And California First has thus far not done a lot in San Carlos. They just started offering this financing in late 2014. And so that really hasn't come to San Carlos yet, but there are plans to start doing more outreach, more marketing to the community. In addition to the California First program, the JPA that the city belongs to is also offering another administrator called Open Pace, but they're brand new and haven't yet gotten established here as well. So what HERO is, is a third option that we could potentially offer to this community. However, it would require that the city enter into a new joint powers agreement with the the organization that oversees the HERO program. HERO is was based in Southern California, but is expanding into all other parts of California, including San Mateo County, both the county and various cities within San Mateo County are now offering the HERO program to the community. And what is of benefit to having additional administrators is that each administrator has its own particular program, they can offer different rates, different terms, offer different services, and so that's why more options might be a better option. So at the end of the presentation of both myself and the representative of HERO, we can answer any questions that you may have. So right now, I'd like to introduce John Law of the California HERO program.
All right. Hello, Mr. Law.
Thank you, Tara. Hello, Mr. Mayor, council and staff. I'm John Law with Renovate America. We're the providers of the HERO product. I appreciate the opportunity to make a brief presentation. I'm going to try to cover a lot of ground quickly and take a number of questions, and I'm excited that you're considering bringing more consumer choice to your community in terms of this innovative finance offering. So I'm going to make sure I get the right button here. Do I have to point this at a particular? Is there an on/off switch? It was off, I'm sorry. Okay, so again, we're HERO, which is our product. We've partnered with industry leaders, with government at the center, and a number of other industry leaders. other industry leaders to provide 100% voluntary privately funded energy efficiency, renewable funding, and water conservation measures. The way we do this is through property assessed clean energy legislation that was adopted in California in 2008. And it's a new way for property owners to make these efficient upgrades to their home that may be more affordable and have other benefits that they're not currently able to get. The repayment for these eligible products on eligible properties is made as a line item on their property tax bill. Now, we've been doing this for a little while, and we've learned a lot on the way, but in the last 12 months, HERO has financed 95% of the nation's residential property assessed financing, and we operate just in California. What we're able to provide is an ongoing source of capital, which means this won't be a program that starts in your community, that then has to stop because of some finite fiscal funding. We have a scalable product with two successful securitizations and a comprehensive technology infrastructure that allows us to handle the volume and scale rapidly throughout the state. We've been widely recognized, recently earning the governor's highest environmental and economic partnership award, best residential partnership with U.S. Green Building Council, and numerous other validations that demonstrate HERO's high-quality What we bring to communities is we're helping property owners increase the value of their properties, make the efficient products more affordable. We're also lowering utility bills, which is helping the community. We're creating an economic impact through job growth because contractors are growing their business, hiring more people to do this type of work. We are making environmental impacts that help with your climate action plans in terms of greenhouse gas reduction and water savings. And we're leading the industry in terms of the consumer protections that we offer to make sure that our track record of satisfied property owner continues, and you can rest assured through endorsing HERO that you won't be, that you will be protecting your consumer with protections that don't otherwise exist today through other sources of financing. So when we talk about products and projects and all those things that bounce around, what it equates to is we're able to do a lot of things for property owners in a more affordable way than what they're doing now. There are over 50 different product categories, from solar to roofing to water efficiencies and so forth that qualify for the program. And what property owners are able to do is expand the scope of their projects from their cash flow position to even offset their energy consumption and their utility savings to a greater impact. We have integrated technology that would provide for the communities that we serve, so at a moment's notice, you can pull up the data per neighborhood, per contractor, per street as to what has happening in your community. We do that real-time, dynamic data at your fingertips. All of you here would be able to pull that up on your mobile device, for example. We provide that same technology infrastructure for the contractor community that we serve, so they're able to manage their business and their pipeline and their energy-saving calculations and all the financing documents with, if they're savvy in technology, that's great. Otherwise, the 1-800 number. But the point is, is that our contractors that we serve have the tools they need to make the workflow using HERO rapid and easy to use. I mentioned earlier, consumer protections, but I'll give you a couple examples. Today, when a contractor and a property owner engage in some work and they finance that on some form of revolving credit, there's really no additional consumer protections. With HERO, there's a number of things that are different. One of the things is the permit verification. Unfortunately, there's a lot of work in California that is done without all the required permits by the jurisdiction completed. With HERO, that doesn't occur. So the safety and the quality standards are automatically increased. We make sure that if a job typically is priced in this range, and it comes to us and it's priced in a range outside of that, we find out why first. We make sure that contractors are identified properly or credentialed properly, et cetera, formalized consumer protections. The way we reach those folks is at the street level. So while we register them and train them, we have account managers that work in the field day-to-day with your property owners and your contracting local community, so that the sales training is done, the document processing, all the financing nuances are explained clearly and concisely to your property owners. Finally, we're open seven days a week over 12 hours a day. So we have dedicated account representatives. We're filling, filled in phone calls. When people are working with their contractors in their home, it's, you know, early hours, late hours, we are accessible and resolve any disputes that come up so that the city is not engaged. Some stats. This data is a week old. We're now at 249 California cities and counties. 27,000 completed residential projects for about $515 million in upgrades as of this week. That's $876-plus million in economic stimulus, and 39,000 tons of annual abated CO2 emissions, or the equivalent of taking 172,000 SUVs off of the road for a year. So with your help, we're able to bring HERO to the community. The municipal leaders provide the opportunity. Our contractors that we work with here locally are creating new jobs and growing their businesses, and homeowners are increasing their property value and the comfort of their homes. The method by which we do that is adoption of a resolution, as mentioned, to become an associate member only in the JPA for the sole purpose of bringing HERO to the community. That, I thank you, and I'll take any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Law. Bob, I think you were first.
Oh, wow. First?
Your light was on first.
Gosh, this is like Jeopardy.
I know. I almost got on that once. Mr. Law, how are you? We met before, I think.
Yes, sir.
How are you? I'm going to ask you some questions here, and hopefully you can be lenient. Now, HERO is like a private company?
We are. So there's a number of entities that make up the HERO team, so to speak. So the JPA is 17 cities and Western Riverside Council of Governments. I work for Renovate America, the residential funding partner and program administrator. There are a number of other partners in the program.
Okay. Are there other companies that do this or can do this?
There are. You participate in an existing program now that operates under the same legislation. The product is called California First that you have available here in your community now. The company that's behind that is Renewable Funding.
Okay. Any estimate of how much of the 515, because I heard you say it went up, 515 million is in the Bay Area?
Up? I could give you a real ballpark estimate. Yeah, it's probably 6, 7 million dollars right now, understanding that if the council were to adopt tonight, there's a process before we go live in your community that takes three to five months. So what that means is most of that number I just gave you came from San Jose, who launched last July.
Sure. Okay. Most of the other cities have come in the last six or eight months. I would assume that they're listed here in our staff report.
Right, or even less. Almost all of the region here in San Mateo County has come on board, but many are just getting ready to launch next month.
Sure. Do you have an average, you've obviously done a lot of work in Southern California and Riverside County. Is there an average cost to a homeowner?
Well, do you mean an average cost in terms of the average project amount we're doing?
Yeah, I guess that would be it, yeah.
And that's a fair way to say it. So yeah, I'll give you two figures. It's $18,000 is typical, the project amount. About a third of the projects we do are solar. About two-thirds are some form of energy efficiency or water conservation.
Okay. And that's mostly, again, done in Riverside County? I mean, most of this 18K, basically, the numbers have come from down in that area?
Yeah, San Bernardino. I mean, you know, from a timing standpoint, we started funding in December of 2011 in those 17 cities where we originated. Then we expanded to another 24. So over time, we're broadening
I understand.
The scope.
The reason I ask the question is it's $18,000 in Riverside, but it might, I mean, or possibly in that area, it might be more expensive. It might be, I don't, who knows? But it could be more expensive up here.
Yeah.
The San Bernardino County is a different duck.
Sure, sure. And I think what you'll see, too, is that ratio of solar versus energy efficiency and some of the things that are norm perhaps in Southern California will very likely be different in a Mediterranean climate.
Especially in Daly City.
Yeah.
Daly City, I don't think the solar is going to fly too much, but
There you go.
Okay. Well, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that that was all on the record so that everybody understands where we're going. Thank you, Mr. Law.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, Bob, I don't know who was next. Matt's on my right, but you go first. Sorry, Mark.
So one of the questions I was going to ask was based on my trip to the bank today. And when I was waiting in line, there was a thing that they had about getting a home equity loan. And interest rates on those are pretty darn low right now. So I could just, and so where my mind went on that, given what you're presenting, was you go to the bank, you get a home equity loan, you do one of these projects, you know, what do we need this for?
Sure.
And then you answered some of that by saying, "Well, there's this, you know, you guys do this extra work to check the pricing and check the contractors and so forth." So that all made sense. But then, I don't know how to put this in a gentle way or a nice way. I'm sitting here wondering, why are we helping HERO do its business? Why the city of San Carlos is helping HERO do its business? Because it seems to me, everything you offer could just be put out there on the marketplace and looks like good stuff, and people sign up for it. And I just, I don't understand why we need this JPA inclusion or the city. It seems, and what I'm feeling like is the city is giving a stamp of approval to this program and saying to all our residents, "We give a stamp of approval to this program." They don't do that to my business, so why should we do it to yours?
And that's fair. So we need, to be able to operate, we need the authorizing body, the one that has the jurisdictional authority to place an item on somebody's property tax bill. Okay? The method by which we've done that in the spirit of efficiency and not being duplicative and not having a bunch of cost for the jurisdictions or for others is by the means of this JPA associate membership. We intended, when we began the HERO program, to serve 17 cities in the western half of a county in Southern California for an economic stimulus program way back in 2008. If we use Sonoma County, who administers their own program, and they're the longest-running PACE program in the country, they did it purely for environmental reasons. The good news is, with PACE, with a PACE program that actually does projects, you get both benefits. The short answer is that the authorization to amend the geography for the JPA to give, for the sole purpose of HERO, gives us the ability to operate with your community. We're not even asking necessarily for an endorsement, but we are asking to be able to give your consumers' choice, your property owners' choice, if you have PACE available now under some legislation that passed in 2008. And we've got a proven track record with all these additional protections. We would love the opportunity to participate and serve your community as well.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to be faster pressing the button next time. Thank you for the presentation, both of you. Just some, a few questions here. Does entering into, or giving you the authorization you need with HERO, does that conflict with any of these other PACE programs that are out there?
It does not. We do not ask for exclusivity. We encourage an open marketplace and have since the onset because in the spirit of the things we're trying to achieve, both economically and environmentally, more work will get done, right? If there's a greater awareness that this is more affordable, whether it's us or the other guys. So we don't ask for exclusivity. We encourage you to adopt multiple programs. We don't ask you for a time commitment or a length of term. We expect that we're going to have to perform as we describe or perform, and if the city does not want us to operate any longer, the city can easily withdraw.
And actually, thank you for that answer. Sort of the inverse of that. Tara, does, would moving forward with HERO cause any conflicts from the other programs' point of view? HERO does not require exclusivity. Do any of them require exclusivity?
When I spoke with the California First representative, he said, "This is great."
Okay.
So he had the same opinion that John does.
All right. Good. Nice when everybody's on the same page. I noticed from your map that you are doing work in the Bay Area, but sort of as a follow-on to a comment that Bob made. I guess my question is, how would you describe your degree of familiarity with the contracting environment here? Because my limited familiarity with it is that it's kind of red hot right now, which can make these kind of programs difficult to administer.
We make sure we hire people that are familiar. So I'm more familiar with government relations than I am with the contracting community, but I'm not sure, I want to make sure I understand that it's kind of red hot right now. What do you mean?
Oh, contracting firms and services are in such high demand, they're, how can I put this charitably? There are a growing number of people providing the services who probably ought not to be. So it puts a premium on your ability to properly administer the program and make sure that, for your own sake and for the sake of our community members who would be dealing with you, that you're actually filtering, you know, doing a good job of filtering.
Okay. I want to make sure where you were headed. Yeah, I think that we've done 27,000 projects. Nine out of 10 would recommend HERO to a friend, and nine out of 10 are completely satisfied with their contractor. So through the program design, we have some assurances of enforcing things that already exist that aren't always necessarily followed. We make sure to do some pretty robust certification, making sure that, because this is a little bit different financing product, we have a strong compliance team where if somebody isn't behaving nice, usually it's a dot the i and cross the t kind of thing, but in cases, it's not always that case, and those folks don't get to offer HERO anymore. These folks that are using this finance tool are growing their business typically with HERO. So there's an inherent willingness to want to do it right, to continue to grow their business. But again, I mentioned there's some formalized tools that we're leading the industry with in terms of consumer protections and contractor verification certifications. It simply doesn't exist otherwise. And all of the permitting stuff that unfortunately gets skipped often, doesn't get skipped with HERO. So that's how we're making sure that we're offering the highest quality product. And we're a finance mechanism. We're not even a contractor, but we're holding contractors to higher standards.
And actually, that was one of my other questions. Should you make sure the permitting actually is done properly?
Yeah, that's correct. And then we do a couple other validations, if I may, with the property owner of record, both written and verbally, in a couple different sequences before we fund, to where everything is up to satisfaction before we pay. But the great news is, and the reason contractors love working with us, is if you do it right, we pay faster than anyone.
This next one may have been answered in your presentation, and I just missed it. Is HERO available just to residential property owners? Is it, or is commercial property owners, it's available to any property owner?
Yeah, the legislative, you know, provided, so yes. There's a different funding partner for commercial, as there should be, because it's a different animal, project finance. But if you were to authorize HERO, you would be authorizing this type of financing for both residential and commercial property owners.
Okay. Thank you. And my last question is, it actually was triggered by something that Matt was asking you. When you're interacting, or when your contractors are interacting with potential customers, and I, I mean, from what I'm hearing, this program looks very interesting to me, right? But I would not want the contractors to sort of imply or state, "Oh, we're endorsed by the city of San Carlos." Do you have any kind of disclaimer in there? Do you train people on that?
Yeah, we absolutely do. It's the co-branding piece. It's the proper representation piece. So there's a couple things in there, right? We're, contractors engage in a participation agreement, right? The contractor standard. They're not representatives of the city of San Carlos. It's not a government program. They are not representatives of HERO. All of those things they have to adhere to and agree to, and that's part of the things if you don't do it right.
Okay. That was it. I will just mention in passing, assuming that this does pass, you want to make sure you talk to Greg Rubens about our solicitation ordinances.
Okay.
Okay, Bob?
Sorry. I thought of another question, Mr. Law. It goes on the property tax bill. Can you give me like, let's say, the $18,000? How many years is that spread over?
Okay, so we have five, 10, 15, or 20 years. And a few examples, there's a 25, but that's the bulk of it. And the maximum available to a property owner is And the maximum available to a property owner is determined by the useful life of that improvement. So not all projects can go 20 years.
Okay, so let's say you put in a solar panel, I'm just gonna...
And those go 20 years.
Okay, and you put in a window, it might be 10. I'm just throwing it out there.
Sure.
Okay, so it's basically what you do is relative to how long the thing is. And so, so I guess there's an incentive, I guess to some extent, then, wouldn't there be an incentive for the contractor to try to put in more items that would take longer? Is there, is there a benefit to that? I guess I'm confused on the, and maybe it's to you, and I'm not sure how this all works. $18,000 is put, let's say, over 20 years on your property tax bill. So it's like $900 a year, or, yeah, $900 a year. If you took 18,000. Let's just make it 20,000, make it easy math. 20 years, $1,000 goes on your property tax bill. There's an interest rate in there. So isn't there an incentive for the contractor or somebody to say, to sell more expensive things? In other words, to try to say, "Well, gee, you really need solar, and you really need a window, and you really need this, you really need that," because the longer it goes, the more interest you make?
So what we're seeing happen is, you know, two-thirds of the work that we're funding, right? So we're not a contractor, we're funding, you know, we're another credit card, only And what we're seeing instead is we're seeing property owners have a cash flow position for this unplanned expense that usually triggers this, right? It's cold in the winter, the furnace goes out. "I need a new furnace, it's $10,000 bucks, I wasn't planning on that." How do I normally pay for it? Some form of revolving credit. This is now allowing me, for that same cash flow, you mean, I can do the furnace and I can do some of this extra work? And if I do that extra work, my energy bill even goes down further? So what we're seeing instead is not so much contractors doing that, we're seeing property owners voluntarily to broaden the scope of work they're doing to their home to improve that quality and that value. And it's demonstrated by, if we look at PG&E, the investor-owned utilities and the Energy Upgrade California rebate programs, and we look at their average scope of work and we see what they typically do that's mandated, and you've got to do these things to earn this, we're seeing, we're seeing our property owners do a broader scope of work voluntarily.
Okay. One, I'm sorry, one other question then. So then, I'm a homeowner, and let's say I have no equity in my home. Does that make any difference?
Yep.
Okay. So each homeowner has to have a certain percentage of equity before they can enter in this...
Yeah, so there's strict underwriting criteria on this, but the difference is, is it's the property, without going into all the depth of it. It is not a FICO-driven process. It's a property and product eligibility process. So typically, what that means is, more folks will have this available at their time of need.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
All right. Thanks, Bob. Matt?
So, this goes on the property tax bill. I do a project that has, let's say, solar panels, got 20 years. So I put this on my, I put solar panels on my house, I finance it through HERO, it goes on my property tax bill. Two years down the road, I sell my home. I suppose I have to disclose that this is on my property tax bill?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because the new owner's going to pick this up.
That's correct. That's correct. And it will, it's a function of title as well, right? But on page one on that offer is the disclosure. Now, you're also right, and it's worth mentioning, that the legislation, AB 811 that we operate under, does allow for that assessment and that permanent improvement to transfer with the property, provided that's negotiated between buyer and seller.
Okay. Anybody would like to speak on this, on this item? I don't have any speaker cards, so. All right. Oh, you know what? I apologize, Paul. I had your card, I knew you wanted to speak, and...
Actually, I wanted to speak.
Well, I thought you wanted to speak on another item.
On another one, but I'd like to say something.
Oh, all right, well, come on up.
I still have a card, because you put it in the stack.
He did it. You're so efficient.
I put in a hydrogen fuel cell energy generator in my house. You know, as new technologies come along, solar panels are going to look kind of outdated. My other thought is, if I did this, it seems like I would be putting a lien on my property if I wanted to sell it. And I can't pay it down earlier. I can't pay off the principal early.
You can't pay it off, can't you? Prepayment? There is no prepayment panel. You can, you can prepare it.
Can prepare it. Okay.
I read it.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Did we get all of his questions answered? He just answered, I think he asked two of them.
He asked about hydrogen.
Yeah, hydrogen. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, I don't think hydrogen fuel cells are currently in the program, but as technologies emerge, you know, product categories and products change. I'd mentioned there is over 50 categories. There's 58 categories right now, and in those categories, right, there's a million different line items of approved products in those different categories. That list changes daily, right? They all have to meet whatever efficiency criteria for the segment they fall into.
Okay. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I was going to make a motion.
I actually, Mark had his light on, so I wanted to make sure he had an opportunity to speak before you do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was actually going to make a motion, but I'm going to allow my colleague, Vice Mayor Johnson, to make the motion instead.
Woo-hoo! Go for it. Winner. Okay. I move to adopt resolution 2015 dash...
22.
22. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos consenting to the inclusion of properties within the city's jurisdiction in the California HERO program to finance distributed generation renewable energy sources, energy and water efficiency improvements, and electric vehicle charging infrastructure, and approving an amendment to a certain joint powers agreement related thereto.
May I second?
You may.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Matt?
I'm just going to comment that, I'm going to vote no on this because I'm still, I appreciate the answer given, but I'm still uncomfortable with this whole legislation and plan, because it appears to me as though it's, the answer I got is that it's a way to finance a project by putting it on your property tax bill, and that's why they have to come to us and get permission to work within our jurisdiction, is in order to do that activity that shows up on the property tax bill. And so it's just a, you know, it's just another means of offering a credit card to somebody, yet I'm not, I'm not convinced that it's necessary, because, as I said, these kind of programs can be done purely in the private sector with, through your bank, if you want to do a home equity loan, or, you know, if you want to verify the contractor that you've got working on your home is good, there's means to do that. I just not am convinced that, I can see that the outcome is a positive thing, you know, greening a house, putting solar panels on, that sort of thing. But I'm just not sure that this mechanism where government is helping along is altogether necessary, so.
Okay. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, that reminds me of a question I forgot to ask, which is, the financing pool that gets set up, that HERO uses to fund the various projects and that the property owners end up repaying, is that a tax-preferred financing of some kind? Or, yes, let me just leave it at that.
Yeah, and I'm not involved in the capital acquisition side of the company. We're completely privately funded. The JPA is the conduit issuer of the bonds. The way that we scale is through securitization. We have done that twice now successfully. There's one company that has done any securitizations in the PACE field. So that's the means by which we replenish and provide that capital. Is that what you're asking?
Not exactly, but you may not be in a position to answer, which is, which is fine. Jeff, do you know the answer to that question?
Believe it is.
You believe it is. That may be part of what, the magic that makes this work, in the sense that it may, it may be, from the property owner's point of view, a more cost-efficient source of capital than, than some other form of financing, precisely because it can go through this JPA structure and be on the property tax bill. But, you know, I do agree with Matt's point about, and that's why it was important to me, that this is a non-exclusive arrangement. It's a voluntary arrangement. And I would expect that anybody who is interested in becoming a customer of HERO, I guess to use that term, would be vetting it, comparing it to other sources of funding and bids and whatnot, just like you would if you're building a house or doing a remodel or whatever. It's just yet another vehicle that people can take advantage of if they wish. And it's really based on that, plus the other elements of the program, that I'm going to support this, because I think it is just providing options. You're not, you know, you're not asking us to endorse you, which we wouldn't do. And I think it's an interesting choice to provide people in San Carlos, and if they want to use it, it's up to you. If they don't, that's also up to you.
All right. Cameron?
Yeah, just a couple, a brief comment, which is, I didn't have any questions, but I am very supportive of this. You know, for those of us that are concerned about global warming and climate change, lacking a, you know, kind of comprehensive federal legislation, the best thing that we can do is to provide people incentives. At the local level, we often look at things like switching out light bulbs in City Hall or changing streetlights, which are important things to do, but they're, the city and the city infrastructure is not a huge draw on power. And so providing incentives for residents and businesses to conserve power, produce their own power, is really the best thing that we can be doing in the city to, you know, have a small incremental impact on what is a huge global problem. So I'm happy that we're moving forward.
All right. Thank you, Cameron. If there are no more comments, I think we're ready for a vote.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocut?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. Moving along to item 10D. Consideration of introducing an ordinance repealing existing municipal code sections 5.44 and 5.48 and replacing with a new San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 5.44, regulating solicitation in the city of San Carlos.
I'll be presenting, Mr. Mayor...
Thank you.
...and council members. Up for consideration tonight is a comprehensive update of the Municipal Code concerning solicitation in San Carlos. The, our existing solicitation ordinance was drafted and adopted in 1950 and has not been updated since. There was an addition for nonprofit solicitation added in 1984, also not changed since that time. As a result of a comprehensive review of what other cities are doing in the state and based on some review of constitutional issues raised in solicitation cases, I've prepared for you a proposed ordinance. Some of the concerns that are continuing, ongoing, and I might add that I think that not a week goes by that I am not processing solicitation without a permit in San Carlos right now, mostly commercial solicitation. But we've also had some enforcement issues with non-commercial solicitation that are addressed in this new ordinance that's before you tonight for consideration. So the issues that we have regarding unpermitted solicitation are included in the staff report, but I think they're worth mentioning right now. Potential criminal activity under the guise of selling magazines or other goods or services. Potential abuse of young people brought into the city from across the country by unscrupulous persons. Potential assault and the invasion of privacy when strangers approach someone's front door without proper identification. Owners, property owners and residents believing that their privacy is being invaded and with a concern for the safety of their family and children. Misrepresentation and fraud that sometimes comes about. Sometimes casing of homes has been suspected and residents being threatened by persons who've solicited without permits. The permit process is designed to provide a way for the people who come in to, with a request to solicit, to be vetted. Commercial solicitation has a higher level of review in the permit and includes background checks. Non-commercial solicitation will not require that level of review, but requires an application, including an ID of the person being, who will be soliciting. The reason for that is to provide a baseline level so that, and an application that, so the public knows that people who have a permit have at least applied and had, and we know who they are when they come and solicit. The main issue with solicitation, remember, is it's defined in the code very specifically. It's asking, it's coming to someone's home or business and asking for money or something in exchange for delivering something. It's not simply going up and exercising your free speech rights. It's not related, it's not canvassing or trying to influence people's political persuasion. It's simply asking, coming to someone's house, trying to sell them something, or trying to sell them a service, or to promote or receive charitable contributions. Those are different than political and speech-related items, which are distinguished in the proposed ordinance. So I, what you're, the technical action you're taking is repealing the two existing ordinances and replacing them with one ordinance. I thought it would be best to avoid confusion. If we had one ordinance, the sheriff's department and staff will be better served knowing exactly where to look. Just in my enforcement activities, there has been confusion in the past about the different ordinances and what they mean and what qualifies as solicitation, what does not. And so with that, I'm recommending that the council introduce this comprehensive ordinance review and revisions, and then bring it back at a future meeting for adoption.
Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Greg, quintessential question in a case like this. How does this apply, or perhaps not apply, to Girl Scouts selling cookies door-to-door?
Well, we have a provision that people soliciting under, who are under 12 years old, need to be accompanied by an adult, presumably be a parent. Technically, nonprofit solicitation would require someone from, probably from the local scout troop or the, or the organization for Girl Scouts to come in and just simply provide some basic information about their organization and tell us when, the when and where they're going to be soliciting, and then have that be part of a permit, so the public has confidence that the organization has actually applied and gone through the process. From an enforcement standpoint, I have not, in my years of being the deputy or the city attorney now for the past six years, have ever had a complaint about Girl Scouts or Boy Scouts soliciting. But technically, they, those organizations would be required to get a nonprofit, non-commercial, excuse me, permit.
And it sounds like they would have been required under the ordinance that would be repealed if we were to follow your recommendation.
Yeah, they were technically required. Under the old ordinance, they were required to obtain a permit as well. And, so that answers your question.
Okay, that's fine. My last, all right, I shouldn't say last. Next question is, one, you and I had talked about it, but I just want to get it on the record. Since I think the overwhelming majority of people in San Carlos would probably opt not to have solicitation, the, excuse me, that's actually for a different item. So I have no other questions at this time.
Well, that raises another question, Councilmember Olbert, that I forgot to mention in my brief presentation, given the hour, that... that there is a component that might sound familiar from another ordinance that you introduced called a Do Not Knock Registry that would be an element of this that would allow people to post with the city clerk that they do not want to be solicited. And so there's an element of that here as well.
Well, related to that, and is there a reason why it has to be a Do Not Solicet Registry as opposed to a Solicet Registry? In other words, where the default is, you don't get to solicit?
Well, that's a good question. I think the idea behind it is that if you, because of the, there's case law that talks about some presumptions that people approaching your front door have the ability to ring a doorbell and come to your front door. So the Do Not Knock Registry is intended to notify those persons and overcome that presumption that, no, you are not welcome to solicit at this address.
Thank you, and thank you for covering for my senior moment.
All right, Bob?
I was gonna just make a motion unless there's more questions.
Any other questions of staff? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to introduce ordinance number...
Fourteen eighty-four.
Fourteen eighty-four, an ordinance to the City Council of the City of San Carlos repealing existing municipal code sections 5.44 and 5.48 and replacing with a new San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 5.44, regulating solicitation in the City of San Carlos.
A second.
All right, and I apologize, I didn't ask if there was any members of the public that wanted to speak on this. Come on up.
We live in a next-door site in our neighborhood a lot, and we solicit between each other. Does this fall under this code, or is that, is that all good?
These voluntary exchanges between persons is not regulated by this. This is door-to-door solicitation.
Okay.
All right, okay. Discussion? Not seeing any. Crystal?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grollcut?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay, we have gone through the regular agenda. We need to circle back and to consent calendar items eight D and E. So let's talk about eight D. And eight D is adopt an ordinance fourteen eighty-two, amending and replacing San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 6.04, Animal Control Concerning Dangerous Animals, Dog Owner Accountability and Liability, Fees, Insurance, or Licensing Requirements, Dogs and Indoor, excuse me, Dogs and Outdoor Dining Areas and Other Cleanup Provisions.
Through the chair, I think that was the item that somebody had asked.
Yes, and if no one, there's no questions from us. Maybe, Mr. Manjani, this is your opportunity to speak on what you finally wanted to speak about, or originally wanted to speak about.
I like that you're making the owners responsible. They should be. And the responsible dog park people, they're great. I took my dogs to Burton Park. It was a great way to socialize your dog and socialize with each other. The aggressive dogs, those who choose to own a dog that is inherently aggressive, they need to, well, they may not know that, and they may not know that until it's too late. What I have difficulty with is at the outdoor dining scene. I've worked for vets. I was a pre-vet in my past life in college, and I've worked with dogs. And I know their body language, and I know when an aggressive, or what we call it in the industry, was a fractious dog, and how to handle, how to take care of that. But most people don't. And to me, the most dangerous situation like that is where you've got a family with their dog eating food. A dog's religion is food. And if you're not the alpha dog in that pack, because you're sitting there, you're a pack, then that dog is gonna be the alpha dog. And that dog, everybody thinks their dog is the most wonderful dog in the world and will never, ever, ever hurt anybody, and some of them are wrong. And actually, that occurred to me. I was walking my dogs along Laurel, and there was a couple with a young bulldog, and he just wanted to eat. And fortunately, I'm knowing dogs, I knew what to do, got between my dogs, and I didn't have to go postal on the dog. The owner came, it was loud, it was ugly, but nobody really got hurt. But you need to realize that, first of all, the Assembly Bill doesn't require that you allow it. It gives you that option. If you get, if you take that option, you're electing to allow what, to me, seems like an inherently dangerous situation where a dog might attack, where in a situation like in a dog park, it would be totally opposite.
Paul, if you could just wrap it up. I'm just considering the hour, and we have a council member who's just recovering from an illness. So we're trying to finish up.
So what I'm suggesting is that you be cognizant that if you're going to be allowing outdoor dining with dogs with their pets, you're creating this situation, and it's not just on the owner, but it's on you for allowing it.
All right, thank you very much. Okay. Mark?
Yes, actually, just following up on what Paul's comment was, a question for staff. My recollection is that the ordinance as written gives restaurants the option of allowing dogs in outdoor eating areas, provided they meet certain requirements as spelled out in the ordinance, which derive from state law. But the ordinance does not require restaurants to allow, to take that step. Is that correct?
That's correct. The way the ordinance is worded, it allows retail outdoor dining establishments to permit dogs, and then sets forth what, if you're gonna do that, here's what, the rules you need to follow.
I'll just make an observation. I think Paul is correct in, or I should say, I agree with Paul in what he's saying, that it is a risk factor. It's related to the risk factor of allowing dogs in a community to begin with. I mean, that's why, in fact, we have to have a language in here about aggressive and dangerous dogs, is that some portion of them actually cause problems. So, but I'm glad that you confirmed that we are not imposing a requirement to allow dogs on restaurants in San Carlos, merely giving them the option.
The other option would be that is not consistent with how we've been historically dealing with dogs in outdoor areas, is we, you could prohibit them completely, and that would be imposing a different type of rule on businesses by saying they're prohibited. But since this new state law came in, into effect, it seemed prudent to adopt its, the uniform standards, especially given the type of enforcement we have in San Carlos that is by a county-wide agency.
All right, Matt?
In a situation like Paul was describing, which I've had that, where I'm walking my little tiny dog, and you don't see the dog that's, you know, tucked under the table until it's too late and it comes, you know, roaring out. So something, a situation like that goes awry and, you know, there's a, you know, an accident or whatever you want to call it. Who has liability there? Does the city, because we have the ordinance, have any liability?
The city wouldn't have liability, but the dog owner would potentially, the aggressive dog owner, let's put it that way, or the owner of the aggressive dog, would potentially have liability because they're under an obligation to control their dog at all times, under other provisions of the code. And I suppose a restaurant owner, if they contributed to an unsafe condition in some way, could potentially be responsible. But primarily, it would be the owner of the dog.
Very good, thank you.
All right, Bob?
I'm gonna make a motion.
Okay, Mark's light was on. I don't know if I didn't turn it off him last time, or he had another comment.
Same thing. So let Bob do it.
Okay.
Do I need to read the ordinance, or read the?
We recommend read the title.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance fourteen eighty-two, amending and replacing San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 6.04, Animal Control Concerning Dangerous Animals, Dog Owner Accountability and Liability, Fees, Insurance, or Licensing Requirements, Dogs in Outdoor Dining Areas and Other Cleanup Provisions.
A second.
All right, motion and a second. Crystal?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grollcut? Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes, okay. And now on to eight E. Adopt ordinance fourteen eighty-three, opting chapter, adding Chapter 5.45, regulating delivery of unsolicited or unsubscribed paper, plastic, or composite materials on private property in the City of San Carlos. Cameron, I think.
Let's start with Greg, and then I'd like to...
Okay, go ahead.
Well, the council introduced this proposed ordinance at its last meeting. And to be clear, the purpose of this ordinance is to regulate of classification of activity based on conduct. The conduct that is attempting to be regulated in this section is the depositing of written or plastic or other materials on someone's property without their permission. And permission would be established by a Do Not Deliver Registry. That would, that is intended to provide notice to all persons who are intending to deposit such materials on someone's property. And that would, and the penalty for doing that was, is designated in this particular ordinance as an infraction. We have received several letters and correspondence from different groups and mostly groups who are, and one business that has some objections to the ordinance and how it affects their business. And at least one of the groups has offered to meet with staff to discuss some of their practical and other concerns about the ordinance. So tonight, because of that, I'm proposing and recommending that the council defer the formal adoption of the ordinance tonight so that I have a chance to talk with these groups, to hear what their concerns are, and then bring it back for either a reintroduction, if there are any changes that are consistent with the council's stated goals, and, or bring it back for adoption as presented at a future meeting.
All right. Cameron?
So I, you know, I saw some of these letters as well. I think, you know, it's clear that companies that want a market to residents are unhappy if they're no longer allowed to do so. So I think some of those, there're gonna be cases in which compromise is just not possible. I did see one concern that was raised where, you know, the Yellow Pages were saying that they send their list to their distributor, you know, they said, in this case, thirty to forty-five days prior to distribution. And so our ordinance said that they had to comply with list, and the list was updated every twenty-four hours. So they were asking for, they were saying that wasn't practical. I think that that is a reasonable thing. We could make it so that, you know, once you put your name on the list, you don't, you get assurance that you're not gonna get deliveries after a couple weeks or something. I think that that's a reasonable compromise to accommodate some businesses. But I would like to, we've spent a lot of time on this, and staff has spent a lot of time on it. And I would like to close this out as soon as possible.
Okay. Did we have a motion that we need to withdraw? I don't think we ever made a motion, did we?
We're just saying to, that you don't have to act on it right tonight, and then we'll re-agendize it at a future meeting.
All right, that's great. Well, with that, I think we're adjourned. Wait a minute, sorry, Mark?
Oh, wait, there's more.
Wait, there's more. Apologize, Mark.
That's okay.
I'm not.
So, hey, it's not, it's not ten-thirty yet.
Talk about this the next time. Go ahead.
I just wanted to second what Cameron was saying. I think that that too, I had the same reaction, that that's a reasonable, reasonable compromise to kind of tweak something there. I'd also tee up, although this would be a more substantive change. I personally would be okay with, if Greg feels that we would be on stronger grounds if we were to carve out the not-for-profit exemption that we currently have in there. I think I'd be okay with that. So I just wanted to say that.
Okay. All right, I think with that, we are adjourned.